Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Olbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting, September nineteen, I'm sorry, October seventeen, 2024. Adequate notice that this meeting of the Olbridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcements to the Home News and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Mr. Hollihan will be sitting in as secretary this evening. He's wearing two hats, and he's up here on the dais with us. Would you please call the roll call, sir?
Yes. Ms. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
Ms. Tessa Berry is absent. Mr. Victoria is absent. Mr. Singh is absent. And Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Thank you. Just some housekeeping issues. This meeting is being live-fed on CATV fifteen here within the township. Also, it's being simultaneously sent out on YouTube Live. Should you ever need to review the meeting, you can find them on YouTube. I would ask everyone at this particular time to please silence your phone or turn them off in deference to those who are going to be testifying. We have a rather large schedule this evening. I would ask everyone, please cooperate. I'm going to try and move the initial business through quickly. That leaves us, we have two Cs and three Ds for the attorneys. They know what I'm talking about. That'll probably, I'm hoping if I can get all of those in, and I'm going to move up the other C, I'm going to take the first two Cs and then we'll go to the Ds, hopefully by eight fifteen. That'll leave an hour and forty-five, but I'll stretch it to ten fifteen. The board rules are we shut down testimony at ten, and then we take any public information or questioning till ten thirty. I'm more than willing to go to ten fifteen on that, and that means we have to chop it up. So you have, there's three of you. So you have one hundred and twenty minutes. I'll give each of the applications forty, but in reality, it has to be thirty-five so we can turn it over. So if everybody cooperates, we may be left with some extra time. I don't know, but that's my plans going forward. All right, having said that, I'll move forward on the minutes. Board members, September nineteen, 2024. I hope everyone had a chance to read them and review them. If there's any questions or comments for deletions or additions, if not, please someone move them for memorialization.
Chevalier, move it.
Second, Scogno.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. We move on to resolutions. It's item four on our agenda this evening. There's four of them, councillor, so I'm going to start in order. Eleven dash twenty twenty-four Z. Carol Baker, C and D variance. Mr. Chaney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution granting D four use variance and bulk variances to Carol Baker for one eighty Amboy Road, Madawan, New Jersey, also known as block one one two three eight point thirteen and lot one point one three. Public hearings on June twentieth in 2024 and September nineteen, 2024. Applicant proposed to construct a second story addition with a new basement and construct front and rear covered porches. No public comment was offered. Trying to keep it quick tonight so we can keep on pace. So that's all for that one.
That was quick. That's every other line, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Board members, you've heard the resolution. Please someone move it for adoption.
Chevalier, move it.
Is there a second? Izzo? Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Fifty-four dash twenty twenty-three Z. Conserva irrigation, major preliminary and final site plan with C and D variances. Mr. Chaney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. D one use variance, both variances, and preliminary and final major site plan approval to conserva irrigation for block twelve, three oh one, lot one, also known as four two nine one, County Route five sixteen, Olbridge, New Jersey. Public hearing was held on September nineteenth, 2024. Applicant proposed to retain the existing building as office space for an irrigation sprinkler company and erect additional improvements, including expand reconfigured parking area, white vinyl fencing along the boundaries, and an eighteen hundred fifty square foot outdoor material storage era area. Public comment was received by a pooja bar car. In special concerns regarding the storage of certain equipment outdoors, and those were remitted by the applicant's condition of approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Board members, you've heard the resolution, so a move for adoption, please.
Izzo?
Andrews.
Mrs., Mr. Izzo and Ms. Andrews. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four Z. Shandra Croth Panathoda. It's a C variance.
Bulk variance relief to Shandra Croth Panathoda for twenty-five Hibiscus Court, Olbridge, New Jersey, also known as block seven one two eight, lot twelve. And Mr. Hollihan, just on the road for the record, I do have a clerical error here in the first whereas six fifteen Greenwood Avenue should be twenty-five Hibiscus Court. That's my error. I apologize. I was submitted to a public hearing on September nineteen, 2024. Applicant sought to erect a six-foot vinyl solid fence in his front yard and a gazebo in his front yard as well. Application was open to the public, and no persons provided testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Board members, someone move that for adoption, please.
Chevalier, move it.
Is...
Izzo, second?
Yes.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-four Z. Michael and Julian Pacero, some variance.
Granted bulk relief to Michael and Julian Pacero for sixteen Jasmine Road, Madawan, New Jersey, also known as block twelve thousand dot twenty-one and lot eight. Public hearing was held on September nineteen, 2024. Applicants saw approval to construct an addition on their existing house. No public, no public comments were offered. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Board members, someone move it, please. Izzo? Mr. Izzo, is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Putting you back to work again, Mr. Chaney. We're going to swear in the professionals. We have Mr. Eric Pluckhorn, professional engineer Edward Fox, professional planner, and we have Dan Hollihan, who's the zoning officer for the township.
Gentlemen, can you have you each raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear us the truth of the testimony for which you are about to provide?
I do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen. Alrighty. As I said earlier, is Melissa and Richard Rodriguez here? Okay. You're going to be right out, I'm moving you up on the agenda. The first one's going to be Louis Bertuccio, and then you'll be next, okay? So it was Bertuccio here. Come on up, sir. This lady next to you want to testify as well? Nope? Okay. You can have a seat, and I'd ask you to, either one. No, 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 it's a table. Yeah, right in front of the microphone. You can pull that microphone towards you, and if you would be so kind, there's a button on it. Please push it, and when it turns green, you're good. It's a directional mic, so you need to talk right into it. You don't have to choke it, but yeah.
Gotcha.
All right. We have an application. We know that you're here on a driveway expansion. This is seventy-five dash twenty twenty-three Z. It's block one five five eight, six lot seven oh six, two four three Thackmorton Lane in Olbridge. This is going to require a design waiver. The applicant proposed to legitimize an eleven-by-fifty-three driveway expansion. The driveway was installed one point five feet approximately from the side yard where five-foot minimum is required. What I'm going to ask you to do, sir, is to tell the board in your own words what happened, what you did, why you're here.
Sure.
We may have some questions of you. I'm going to ask the professional why you're here for this design waiver. I'll have to go to a public portion, see if there's anyone who objects or agrees with this, and we'll proceed at that pace. So in your own words, you can start, sir.
Yeah, but...
Put him under oath. I'm sorry.
Can I just swear in real quick? Can you raise your hand? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear us the truth of the testimony for which you are about to provide?
Yes.
Thank you. And just for the record, Louis Bertuccio, right?
Yes.
L O U I S B E R T U C C I O?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
You can proceed now, sir.
Guy came by, told me he had extra blacktop, a very common thing. I said, oh, great, it's a great price, I guess. I got a crummy job. I said, do I need a permit for this? No, you don't. We're just going over your driveway, but we'll make it. They measured the lens. I didn't even really ask. They did it, which I said I wanted the other driveway. So I got it done, paid in cash to get a good price, of course, and I got grass growing out of it a little bit now. So not the greatest, but one thing in mind, I went to my neighbor who has her blacktop done in a double driveway, and I asked, I said, when you did your blacktop, did you get a permit for it? She goes, no, no. I didn't ask her when she did this. So when I came back into the court, like here, to talk about this, when I got the, you know, to find out that I needed a permit to do this, the year she did it, right was before the year that changed when now you need a permit to do blacktop. The time prior, I think it was two thousand fifteen or earlier she got it done, there was no permits required to do blacktop then. So I didn't know that till after all this, but I trusted her, as well as not the guy that did the work, and that's basically where I stand. And I didn't know what to do in the end, so I went for the variance before I tried to get this guy to chop up.
It proves one thing, right? All good deals aren't necessarily good.
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty crummy.
This has happened before. Many people haven't, they don't normally check on some home repairs. We're familiar now with what you did. How far off the lot line are you, do you know?
Approximately, off of what the rules I know, approximately three feet. Not over my line. There's a five-foot mark on three of the five that I'm supposed to be. So three feet would have to be cut off to make it right before I came here.
Okay. Would that be, would that affect you economically, should that happen? Would be a hardship?
I'm sure it's going to cost me.
All right. Well, let's see what the board says first.
Sure, but yeah, and who knows where this guy is, in a sense, who took my money.
All right. These used to require an actual C variance. They now require a design waivers. It's five foot from the property line.
Right.
Did you have any discussion with your neighbor as to...
A hundred percent. The neighbor I asked about doing it with a permit or not.
Same neighbor, okay.
Yes, she's the closest to that, yes.
And she didn't have a problem with...
Absolutely not. She's like, why are they doing this? I said, this is the law. This is the rules.
Okay. All right. Let me ask Mr. Hollihan with what's going on, okay? Dan?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so the applicant's here tonight, just kind of going based off what he said. He's here for a design waiver for a driveway that was previously installed without a permit. Driver was installed about a foot and a half off of the side yard property line where five feet is required, therefore requiring a design waiver away from the board.
Okay. Thank you. Board members on my left, questions of the applicant?
No.
On my right.
Sure.
Where are you parking your driveway? Is the mobile home in it?
Yeah, that's a drivable mobile home, correct. At times, I have a trailer there as well.
Sorry, Jay. So you have a mobile home, and you have like a camp...
Trailer at times. Yeah, the mobile home is drivable, registered, insured, correct. And then I have a duly truck, my truck and trailer.
So was that in your decision on the driveway because you had to get that mobile home in there?
This is part of that, and as well, I'm not going to lie to anyone here, I've been parking on the lawn for the last fifteen years. There was no more lawn. So when the blacktop guy came through, I said, hey, it's better than the two div-, it looks terrible. Even my neighbors are like, it looks great now with this, meaning this is over fifteen years now.
But if you didn't have that three feet, your tires would be...
Oh, or close to the edge, yes. And another thing to correct things, which is better, I'm only a foot and a half over. I thought I was three, meaning they just said it was a foot and a half. I thought I was three over, no?
You're thinking the opposite. He's backing it off.
Got it.
You're going extended.
Yep. I got you. Sorry, guys. I didn't know.
Yeah.
But yeah.
On my right. Ms. Andrews, anything?
Nothing.
Councillor? All right. So this would fall under a hardship C. No, it wouldn't even, we don't even have to worry about that. It's a design waiver only. Let me go to the public on this matter, okay?
Sure.
Once again, seventy-five dash twenty twenty-three Z. The physical location's two four three Thackmorton Lane. Anyone wants to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand or stand. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public portion. Any final comments?
No.
Okay. This is, it does frequently happen. I always say to people and those watching at home, if you go on the township website and you go into any of the zoning areas or the building codes, they'll tell you what you need permits for. It's always, it's always better to check and do it that way. But this does frequently happen. People have been expanding their driveways. As a matter of fact, I looked at an overview of your neighbors, and I think probably seventy-five percent of them have done the same thing.
Yes.
Okay. And we're homeowners here too, so we understand that. All right. This is for a design waiver. Someone want to move it in favor or opposed?
Izzo, move it.
You move, to approve?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Andrews, second.
Roll call, please, as to the design waiver for approval.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. At least you made your neighbors happy with getting rid of the dirty, the bare lawn.
Yes.
All right. You got your design waiver. I think he has to come in and get that in writing, correct?
Yeah, so the next meeting, the board will memorialize the resolution. Maureen will send you a copy of that. Once you get the copy of that, go back to the building department, file another zoning permit application for the driveway. I'll review it and approve it based off the board's recommendation.
Right.
And it'll be done.
Just so we're clear, because I know we have a weird with having a special meeting on Monday, the next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting, sorry.
Unless I can somehow, if I get it done, then...
I understand. Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for appearing, sir.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next one. It's thirty-two dash twenty twenty-three Z. It's Melissa and Richard Rodriguez. This is R six zone block one five five eight, lot three oh seven. Physical location's twenty-seven Gerhard Avenue. This applicant proposes to legitimize a deck and a patio requiring C variance. You would be Melissa Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay. Board attorney will swear you in first.
Do you solemnly swear us the truth of the testimony for which you are about to provide?
Yes.
Thank you. And Melissa Rodriguez, M E L I S S A Rodriguez, R O D R I G U E Z?
Yes.
Thank you. And you live at the house, this property, the...
Yes.
You live at this house?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else that's going to be testifying with you this evening?
Myself.
You have any documents or pictures or anything that you're going to show the board?
No.
Okay. Again, as a layperson, you're not, you don't have an attorney. We're just going to ask you to do this in your own words. There are certain proofs that have to be put on the record for the board to be able to act favorably or unfavorably, either way. So just tell us what happened, what you did, why you did it, what's there now. I'll again go to Mr. Hollihan. We'll find out what the zoning officer has to say.
Okay, so when we moved in, we had a split deck.
What?
It was a split deck.
Okay.
So we have...
Two level?
Yes. And it started coming up. Kids were getting splinters, constantly kneading, nailing back down. So we ended up ripping majority of that up. We put pavers and cement there, and then there was a part by the pool that we put new wood.
Okay.
When did you move into the property?
When did we move in?
Yeah.
Twenty eighteen, January twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
How far do the pavers go out?
I don't have the exact measurements.
Okay. I'll look at the survey. Anything else you want to tell us right now?
No.
No? Mr. Hollihan?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so this address is here seeking, I believe, two separate C per, just one variance for the deck. So the deck in these zones, if you guys are familiar, the setback is termed on the height of the deck. So at forty-four inches, the setback required for the deck is eleven feet, where it is proposed, I believe...
Two point six.
Two point six, thank you. Yeah, so the deck is proposed two point six feet from the side yard property line where eleven feet is required, and that is the only variance that they are requesting tonight.
Just for the deck?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Board members, questions on my left?
Is there a fence?
Yes.
Between the deck and what's on the other side of the fence?
The neighbor's property.
The neighbor's. So there's no walkway? It's just house, house?
Yes. Yes, there's...
No sidewalk, no passageway?
Correct. Yes.
Do you overlook, does your, the height of your thing look into your neighbor's yard?
You have to really like step up to look into their yard. It's not like you can see directly down. You have to attempt to really look over.
You got along with your neighbors. Obviously, nobody made any complaint.
Correct.
Mr. Chaney, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say, so it's a six-foot fence, I'm assuming, based on what you're saying.
Yes.
On my right. Ms. Andrews, did you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Anything else you want to tell us?
No.
This does happen frequently, just like I said to the gentleman before you, and once again, I'll advise those watching at home, check, and you can find out about these things online. It's a lot easier than wasting your time coming in here. So we appreciate you doing that, however. I'm going to go to a public portion on this and see if there's any comments. Thirty-two dash twenty twenty-three Z. Location twenty-seven Gerhard Avenue. It's for a legitimize a deck, which is two foot six from the line where eleven required. Anyone want to have any comments on this matter? Please raise your hand or stand. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Any final comments?
No.
All right. Again, this has happened frequently. I'm glad that you're a good neighbor. You have a fence around it anyway. You don't impose on your other neighbors, and they don't impose on you, right? Let me just see if someone on the board will move this for approval. Anyone on the board favor moving to legitimize the deck? It's a C variance, two foot six where eleven required.
Move it, Scogno.
Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
Moved in second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. All right. Thank you for coming in. Once again, at our next meeting, it'll be a resolution, and then at that time, you can speak to the building department, right?
Yeah, come see me, Maureen.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Looks like I saved an extra fifteen, twenty minutes, so we can roll the dice on that, gentlemen, whoever. Let's move on to the first application this evening. Twenty-eight dash twenty-two Z. Interbell Automotive. This is for an amended application. EDO one zone, block two zero 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 one, lot twenty-five and six. Physical location seventeen oh six, English Town Road. Used car dealership license. This requires D variance. Wayne Miller Esquire representing the applicant. Please be seated, sir.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Lane Miller on behalf of the applicant, Interbell Automotive. This is a return to the board for a modification of a D variance. Unfortunately, DMV has required us to triumph form over substance. When the applicant was here previously, he testified, and you'll hear from the applicant today, he's in the business of dismantling cars, selling the parts overseas. In order to acquire cars from auction, he requires a used car dealership. It's required by the auctions. He applied to this board for a used car dealership, the ability to have in operation a used car dealership on site so that he could get that license, so he could acquire the cars, sell them over, take them apart, sell the parts overseas. No intent ever to operate as a true used car dealer, as we generally conceive it with the advertisement, you know, the big flags, the blow-up balloons waving. DMV unfortunate, well, this board granted the application on the requirement that there be no sales on site. When he applied for his DMV application, had to provide proof to the DMV that used car sales operations were permitted by the town, that he got an variance, et cetera. And the zoning officer properly noted on the bottom of the acknowledgement that car sales were not permitted on site, as had been stipulated by this board and agreed to by the applicant. I submitted with the application, the correspondence from DMV, which said, you're denied because you have to be able to conduct all activities of a used car dealer, which includes selling on site. You can only negotiate on site, and you have to have at least two cars able to be shown, not actually showing, but able to be shown on site. Accordingly, the intent for which the use variance was obtained last time wasn't able to be realized because of the DMV. We're back here today trying to remedy that and meet the minimum requirements of the DMV. You'll hear from the applicant. He doesn't intend to change his business model at all, has no intent to advertise, and will agree not to advertise for used car sales. The two spots that he needs to be able to show cars, there has to be two spots available to show cars for sale. He is willing to stipulate will not be visible from the street. There are two locations on the site that seem appropriate. One is right next to the building, shielded from the street, or at the far back by the pond, distant from, as distant from the street as you can get. I have two witnesses. One is Dimitri Vasgryn. Did I pronounce it correctly? The owner of the property, operator of the business, and we have a planner, Paul Gleets. He's standing in for Alison Kaufman, who was unable to make it tonight due to a conflict, so he stepped in at the last minute for us. So unless the board has questions of me with regard to that, generally, I would call up Mr. Vasgryn.
By all means.
Would you like him to sit here?
It doesn't matter. Why don't you sit over that?
Why don't you sit?
Give the stenographer breathing room.
Yeah. And you have to press the button so the mic lights up.
When it turns, okay, perfect. And once again, you've testified before, but stay close to the mic. It's directional, not that close, so they pick it up.
Okay. Yeah, but swear in, sir. Do you solemnly swear us the truth of the testimony for which you are about to provide?
Yes.
Thank you. And can you say your name for the record?
Dimitri Vasgryn.
I may need you to spell it.
D Z M I T R Y V A Z G R Y N as a Nancy.
Now, Mr. Vasgryn, you...
Sorry, you said the last name? One more time, the last name.
Last name, V A Z G R Y N as a Nancy.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Vasgryn, you heard me describe the nature of the application, the intent and purpose, correct?
Yes.
And did I state that accurately?
Absolutely.
Can you tell the board the nature of your business?
So we buy damaged cars. So we buy damaged cars from different type of auctions, we take it apart, we load into containers and ship it overseas. So let's say I move bad cars, bad parts out of the country.
Okay.
I mean damaged cars, which are usually not usable at all.
So essentially salvage cars?
Absolutely, almost always.
Okay. And you've been operating in Old Bridge at this location for how long now?
Since two thousand and eighteen.
Okay.
Almost six years.
And you've gotten permits and approvals for the operation of your dismantling and sale?
Yes, I believe same year.
Okay. Then there was a change in operations which occurred as a result of world events and particularly the Ukraine war, correct?
Yes, you know, I used my like foreign accounts, you know, so I'm originally from Belarus, from Minsk, and I use a Belarusian company to buy cars here at the auction, they accept it, like foreign countries, but once the war started, they closed all accounts belong to Belarus and to Russia. And now I have to use like somebody else's account, and that costs really a lot of money. And because of the tough like economical situation, that's really affect me. And you know, it's not so convenient, you know, at any time, I could lose this, for example, that accounts, you know, so I ask you guys to.
Chair, just so the board can understand, I'm gonna slow it down and back it up a little bit. Since the loss of the foreign license and right to purchase, you've been using another car dealer's license to purchase the cars on your behalf?
Yes, I mean, it looks, let's say brokers.
Which?
Costs a lot of money, yeah.
And involves transporting the cars to numerous locations.
Of course.
Okay. And you're asking the board to allow you to have a license so that you can purchase directly?
Yes.
Okay. Is it your intent to run a used car business as we normally conceive and understand a used car business to operate?
Not at all.
Okay. Will you agree with the board that you will not advertise that this is a used car business?
Of course.
Under the DMV requirements, is it your understanding that you have to be able to have two spots available to show cars for sale?
Yes.
If we're gonna have cars? And I described to the board that you're willing to make sure that they're not visible from the street, we will designate two spots at the board's discretion and whim, any place they want on the site, but nowhere they pick on the site would be visible from the street?
Yes.
And the two spots that I suggested were perhaps next to the warehouse building, where it'd be shielded by the building from the street, or in the very rear of the lot, where on the current plan it's marked as storage spaces back by the pond.
Yes, any spots board can suggest?
In connection with the DMV requirements, you also have to be able to have sales on site, and that's one of the things we're looking for from the board, correct? Is it your intent to actually sell entire vehicles on site?
Not at all, in.
Okay. We had in the application said, in order to alleviate some of the concerns of the board, that in addition to only having up to two spots available for showing cars, you would agree that no more than one retail customer could be on site at any time?
Yes.
Do you currently have any retail customers come to the site for any purpose?
No.
No?
No. All my business is export only.
And is that's what you intend to continue?
Yes.
And one of the concerns raised by the professionals was, how do we monitor that you're only gonna have one person on site? Are you willing to agree that anybody, if there were to somehow be a used car retail purchaser, would be on site by appointment only?
Yes.
And are you willing to agree that as a stipulation, that the used car operations could only be run in conjunction with the dismantling and off-site sale of auto parts?
Yes.
Because you're not going to in fact have retail customers on site, just as you no longer, you already don't have retail customers, no change in traffic?
Nothing.
No train, change in impact?
Nothing.
Okay. Now, you did acquire the property next door to the current location, correct?
Yes.
And there's reference in the professionals' notes to a meeting that occurred in March concerning your use of that property, is that correct?
Yes.
You're not seeking any ability to use that property as part of this application, correct?
No, that's a different case, but I'm not going to sell cars anyway.
Okay. And that's what I was getting to, there is going to be a separate application that's gonna be coming in front of either this or the planning board, whichever is the appropriate board, relating to any use of that property, and that would be dealt entirely separately, but in no instance is there going to be any desire or intent to seek.
Yes.
Ability to sell used cars there. No other modification is being made to the property?
No.
You're not putting any additions, you're not putting new signage, no other changes?
No sign, nothing.
Okay. I have no further questions of this witness at this time.
Planner, you gonna weigh in on this? Mr. Fox?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the applicant has addressed all, most of the concerns, as pointed out by Mr. Miller. One thing that we need to address is, how are those two display vehicle locations gonna be, are they gonna be marked or signed or things like that in case someone from DMV comes down and says, "Where are these, where are these display cars?" We could have some sort of pulmated sign or some other type of markation that.
We can, honestly, until I saw your comment earlier today, I hadn't thought through that, because I think the DMV just needs to see that it's permitted. So as long as they get an approval that says, "Car sales are permitted on site," they're fine. The thing that flagged them last time was specifically, and again, not improperly accurately, the statement that car sales could not occur on site.
I see.
And we immediately got a response, "Yep, you can't sell on site, you can't be a car dealer." But if the board desired that there is some sort of designation.
Yes.
These are the car areas, or if we wanted to designate in the resolution, these are the only areas that the cars that are for sale can be located.
Yes.
We're willing to do that, and as I said, the places that, in my looking at the plan, left to mind, were in front of the warehouse, which is shielded from the street, or the very far back. But making clear the intent is really to satisfy the DMV, but not have people walking on site to buy cars.
I understand, thank you, and I'm getting the impression that if someone walks in, any two cars anywhere could be for sale.
That is correct, even though, as you've heard from the applicant, I don't think anybody wanna buy the cars he's got, so.
Yes. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all that we had, I don't know if Mr. Miller wants to ask the applicant to provide the testimony for the D-one use variance, or your professionals can do that?
We're gonna address that through the professional, and in terms of the D-one, you'll hear from our planner, we were looking at this as a D-two, a modification of an existing, because the ability to have the used car lot was granted previously, but he will provide D-one testimony. It really is just gonna mimic the D-one grant that was testified to by Ms. Coffin at the last hearing.
I understand, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pluckhorn, do you have anything?
No.
You can proceed, Mr. Miller.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me just ask the board, do you have any questions of the owner? Obviously, he's been here before us.
Mike, where's the mic? This area lot, what size is it?
It's four point six five acres.
Four point six five acres, and in the EDO one's zone, it has a number of specifications, I don't see you hitting that mark, the market for, so you're just talking about going down to one employee?
Oh, no, 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 up to one retail customer for used car purchases. His business doesn't involve retail at all, but we have to do that to satisfy the DMV.
I understand. It talks about increasing the local ratable, are you, for the township? It talks about the job base, regional job base.
We're not changing anything with the job base, this is an existing operating business that merely needs this license to continue to exist and operate the way it has.
And what are you doing for the residents? In other words, your vehicles get shipped out, right? You ship them out of the country.
Actually, I ship parts, not vehicles.
You ship them to Ukraine, you ship them.
To Kazakhstan.
Yeah, so what do you do for the residents here in Old Bridge? Because the EDOs clearly specifies a balance of residential support.
Okay. If I may, this was already a permitted use, the only change we're seeking is in the existing approval for the licensure, it's not a new EDO application. So everything that would have applied, and I can go through how many employees he has, what it's done to the ratable base, 'cause he's made significant improvements to the property since he acquired it and the like.
But you are in the EDO one zone.
Yes.
And that clearly specifies certain things that you must meet.
And I would.
Are you familiar with the zone?
Yes, and I would, I would suggest to the member on the board, he met those qualifications when he got his original approval, and he continues to meet those qualifications. I can go through them, I did not touch upon those issues because this is not an application for new, non-pre-existing business or use, it's merely a modification to permit the licensure so he can continue what he's doing. If I may.
You currently have a supplier, a third party that you're using now?
Yes.
You currently have someone who's, you can get the cars with now, though?
Yeah, that's brokers, yeah, but you know, they, I pay a lot of money for them, it's not so convenient, it takes a lot of time, money and efforts, you know?
Right, but you, but you can still operate your operation now?
It's very tough, you know, so like rates are high, you know, I'm paying so much money, I'm almost, almost at the age, you know, so it's really too difficult, really. And you know, it's, they could close my account at any time, because you use like a middleman, you know, so who knows, tomorrow he will close his business and I just got stuck.
All right. I just really haven't heard that you needed, you know, to have a license to buy cars at an auction before.
I can only state that we tried to do it, wouldn't be back here if we didn't need to. And I did not bring those documents with me, but Mr. Vazgryn had provided me statements from different dealers, and we actually sought from the town, trying to deal with one of the dealer, one of the car auction companies, a request stating that he didn't need any additional licenses to run his business as it is, which is the dismantling and sale. And we weren't able to get the language that the particular auction wanted, I'm not sure why, but the town had no obligation to provide that letter, but it was not provided, and that's one of, again, the reasons we were here. In connection with the issue of he's able to get it from third parties, in terms of the DMV regulations, them buying and providing to him for sale is really in a gray zone of the regulations, even in what's attached to the response from the DMV that I attached to the application here, one of the things they prohibit are purchasing for sale off your particular site. So realistically, a dealer who buys a car is not supposed to sell it anywhere except on their site, so there's, I can argue it both ways, I'm a lawyer, but by sending them to Mr. Vazgryn to take apart and sell off his site, could be cited as a violation by that dealer who acquired the car, which is one of the concerns. We're trying to play by the rules and by the book, unfortunately, the DMV book is quite restrictive.
It's tough all over. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews, anything?
My concern is this, I'm assuming a new resolution would have to be made with regards to this, to go to the DMV? Now, in that resolution, would they not have to specify that he's only going to have two cars and that only one person, isn't that going to go to the DMV and say, "Well, we're not gonna accept it that way, because it looks like you're skirting around the issue"? That's, that's just how I'm looking at something, when the gentleman there said something about the DMV coming and just looking in check, I find that to be quite feasible, because if I read something like that, "Well, we're only gonna have two spaces, only one retail customer," that, that kind of spooks me a little bit.
I understand.
But that's up, that's just my, my concern.
I'll just say that, yes, a new, obviously a new resolution would, yes, be, if this were approved, yes, it would be prepared, but I'll, otherwise.
Okay, and it's a multi-level answer. One is, yes, I fully anticipate that's what the resolution's going to say. However, our experience last time with the DMV is they did not ask to see the resolution, they merely wanted a, something from the zoning officer saying that the car sales were permitted activity on site. And it was on that letter, and it's a form from the DMV, on that letter, the zoning board officer, excuse me, zoning officer had noted that car sales are not permitted on site, wasn't a copy of the whole resolution, it was just that checkoff box, and he put properly, "Car sales not permitted on site," that triggered everything. However, assuming that the DMV did want to look at the resolution and did wanna visit the site, the regulations, and I attached the response from the DMV inspecting officer to the application, says, "You have to have two spots available." Well, we checked in that box, we met it. You have to be able to sell cars on site, well, he can sell cars on site and he can have up to one retail customer, we've checked that box. Those were the two objections. Now, do I intend to send them the entire resolution if I don't have to? No, if they ask for it, I'm gonna give it, I'm not gonna hide anything. But what I'm gonna do is, as we did before, have the zoning officer fill in the check off the box, and when my new witness is coming up, I'll see if I can find the form from the time we applied last time, I believe I have it here in the file, and I can show the board what that shows and says. We're not trying to be disingenuous with anyone, and that's why I started with, we're really trying, it's a triumph of form over substance, 'cause the applicant wants to do exactly what he's been doing, but there's a particular reviewing officer and a particular rule in the DMV that says, "Even though you don't want to actually do it this way, you have to be able to in order to get the license." So, hopefully that addressed the question, but I'm gonna look for that form if it gives the board any more solace.
And counsel, just so, I, just, so I think for clarity's sake, I think what you're saying also is that DMV doesn't really care how profitable your business is from a used car dealer standpoint, they just care if it looks like a used car.
Absolutely. If it looks like everything else it was supposed to, we're okay, check the box. Can you sell cars on site? Yep, okay, you're good.
Mr. Fox?
Mr. Chairman, on page five of our letter, number sixteen, we have a group of, you know, subsequent approvals, licenses and permits and things like that. Mr. Miller, do you, would your client be amenable to have as a condition approval, approval by the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission?
When you say approval by the DMV?
You have to get a license by the Motor Vehicle Commission, right?
Oh, the approval here being subject to them approving?
Yes.
In theory, no out, no problem.
As the zoning officer gonna know that the Motor Vehicle Commission approved it.
Well, that's where is, we'll be happy to provide proof.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. But my only concern there is in order to get the license, we need to hear, show proof to DMV that it's an approved and allowable use. And if it's only an approved and allowable use, if they have approved it as well, then we're sort of in a catch twenty-two, 'cause each approval is dependent on the other.
My thirty-nine years of being in the. My 39 years of being in this business, and we've had lots of conditions of approval on state agencies, I don't see why that's a problem at all.
Okay. I just don't want to have to come back if they tell me no. I was shocked when I saw this, quite honestly, your zoning officer, Damien Gill, was shocked when the DMV denied. He said, "this is ridiculous, I've seen this tons of times." Didn't matter.
I'll defer to our source on that, whether that should be a condition of approval or not.
I mean, certainly, it's, it can be, in terms of how we always word these, in terms of outside agency approvals, I do, I can appreciate that, you know, strictly applied, it might create a little circular. So I think it's up to.
About when it's approved by the MBC, you give a copy to the zoning officer.
And that, absolutely no problem. And what I was going to throw out is maybe the zoning officer can be, can state in the, when we send in the check-off-the-box form that I still haven't located, he could say, yes, it's an approved use so long as DMV grants the license. I think that works, but I'm more than happy.
If and when approved, you know, I hate to say, you know, two conditions there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry to complicate it, I just want to make sure.
Yep, and I fully understand you don't want to grant the use if it's never going to be used or not for the purpose intended, so.
Counsel, you have another?
I do, and that's going to be Paul Gleitz. He's a professional planner.
I do have a question real quick. I do have a question. Putting on the zoning officer hat real quick. There is a deed restriction currently on the property that was filed with the county.
Going to get into that later, a little later on.
Okay. Okay, no problem.
Okay, I'm going to ask for Mr. Gleitz to come up. And in terms of that deed restriction, it is in place, and one of the things that we would have to ask for is the ability. There is an ability both in the ordinance and in the deed, change it if this board approves, so we'd need to have the board allow that change as well. But I think so far the DMV doesn't know about the restriction, but, so that doesn't become his to the fore, so.
Sir, can I just have you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear as the truth and testimony for which you are about to provide?
Yes.
Thank you. And can you just state your name for the record?
Paul Gleitz, G-L-E-I-T-Z.
And can you just state your credentials briefly?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I received my Master of City Regional Planning from the Blaisdine School at Rutgers University, and I've been testifying in private practice for over 20 years.
Accept his credentials.
Thank you, sir.
So I think we're all familiar why we're here. I won't go through the whole recitation, but just to keep a clean record, we are talking about 1706 English Town Road, which is County Route 527, Block 20001, Lots 25 and 26. As mentioned earlier, the site is 4.56 acres, and we are in the Economic Development Opportunities Zone 1. There was some discussion about the purposes of the EOD 1 zone, a small-scale, a mix of office, retail, and light industrial uses to allow Olbridge to attain the goals of accommodating market forces, increasing local ratable base, expand the local regional job base, providing a more diverse mix of goods and services to residents and businesses within the municipality and the region, achieving an improved balance of residential and non-regional development within the municipality, and utilizing suitable land for development in a more efficient, functional, aesthetic manner, et cetera, et cetera. There's a long list of permitted uses in the zone, a mix of retail sales, retail services, galleries, studios, offices, medical and professional, restaurants, daycare, animal care, educational mini warehousing and self-storage, and as well as, you know, contractor sites and incidents and storage. There's also a number of conditional uses, including gasoline with convenience, retail convenience with fuel, drive-through facilities, and other services, including automotive repair and maintenance and religious organizations. Our existing use is the car dismantling facility. The proposed use is a car dismantling facility with this used car dealer license. To the north, there is a construction company, paving company. To the south, there's a single-family home, and then what was the trailer retail center? To the west is another single-family home with some large vehicle storage in the rear, and then woods. And then to the east, there's a big patch of woods. And beyond that, along the corridor, we have this mix of single-family homes, farms, contractors, garden centers, wooded areas, those types of things all along the corridor. I think the relief we're seeking tonight is a, I'm looking at as a D2, an expansion of a non-conforming use. And then the, we're also looking for the relief from conditions of the prior approval. I think in reviewing the master plan reexamine from 2022, you know, the current EDO zones have a purpose of encouraging development of business and non-regional uses. The land uses permitted in the EDO 1 and EDO 3 zones should be studied to determine whether they should be expanded to create greater flexibility and diversity that would strengthen the local economy and benefit the township. And so I think a brief note in terms of the D1 versus D2 relief necessary for this application, I would just note that, you know, your planning memo that was received this morning states that the, as the applicant has requested that this condition of approval and adjoining deed restriction be modified to allow the used automotive sales, a new D1 use variance will be required for the use, specifically permit the automotive sales with the existing junkyard, we would say, you know, car dismantling facility, and approved, that was approved via use variance. The 2002 approval finding of facts clearly states that, you know, the applicant seeks a use variance pursuant to the D1 standard to utilize a property with an automobile parts and sales license. The functionality and operation of the site will not change. The applicant agreed that as a condition of approval, there will be no customers or sales taking place on the property, and being able to utilize the auto sales license on the property allows the applicant to sell directly to customers and not through third parties. He also found that the granting of the variance can occur without substantial detriment to public good. It will not impact the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. And the applicant agrees that as a condition of approval, there will be no active auto sales on the property. The same will be memorialized by way of a deed restriction, which shall be incorporated into the resolution. The functionality and use of the property shall not change in any way whatsoever. And on page three, the final whereas states, in order to have the restriction released, the applicant or future owner must apply to the board for amended variance relief. So I think the board at that time recognized the fact that you'd have to come back and amend your variance, not seek a new whole cloth use variance. So by looking at this, by adding this license, I'm looking at more as a D2 expansion, which has a lower threshold in terms of the, you know, in terms of the Medici proofs, you know, in terms of particular suitability and master plan reconciliation, and that, you know, the special reasons for a D variance can be found in the fact that if it's granted, you could either minimize the nonconformity or make it more acceptable in this particular setting. And there's a number of court cases, Col v. Fairlawn and Kingward, report of adjustment, and the Burbidge versus Minehill case. I'll talk about how there's a relaxed standard for these, it's an existing use, it's been functioning for some time, and that ways to just improve the site, improve the operations on the site could be considered, you know, a special reason under that D2 standard. So, and again, this is, there was some discussion before about how are we making things better under the standard? This is really kind of a combination where I can address the overall proposal on the site as it's been operating and as was testified to in 17 and in 22, that this type of operation on the site, even though it's not permitted, meets the intent of the zone from a number of standpoints. This additional licensing is really just, you know, taking off the lid and adding a few more marbles and putting the lid back on. It's not trying to justify a whole new use in the zone. So I still think that you can rely on the findings of the board from 2017 and 22 under those prior approvals to justify the D2. I think there's also, under the municipal land use law, purposes of zoning, both option G of the municipal land use law in terms of sufficient space and appropriate location for commercial purposes to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens, subject to applicable environmental requirements. This proposal provides a use needed by New Jersey citizens. It's not, the end product may be going overseas, and the sale may occur, you know, the, but the managing salvage vehicles, managing the accidents on our roads and finding a secondary market for those vehicles helps the local economy in that way. You're generating taxes, you're generating jobs, you're generating economic activity. And if you get into a car accident and your car gets totaled, your car has to go somewhere and be somewhere and turn into something else. So that's, or when we have a natural disaster and cars get wiped out and those cars need to go somewhere and be processed, this kind of an operation helps that overall process with these cars that can't be driven anymore. Additionally, the site's location on the parcel is already developed for the purpose, and it's an appropriate location for that use. And the license is needed to purchase these, you know, salvage title or wrecked vehicles, you know. And that's why the applicant, as you heard before, is seeking this additional relief. Also, purpose O of the municipal land use law talks about the maximum practical recovery and recycling of recycling materials from municipal solid waste. So to meet the goals of the state recycling plan, complement municipal recycling plans. So again, like I said before, storage dismantling and sale of vehicle parts from these wrecked autos, the secondary market removes all of that from the waste stream. So what actually goes into the waste stream in terms of a salvage yard is less, and you've got more value taken out of these vehicles prior to final recycling and disposal. And then again, I think it promotes the general welfare of your own master plan and your ordinance because the underlying use does create an increase in the local ratable base, the expanding of the regional job base and the local job base. You have a diverse mix of services in the area. So those items you were talking about are still accomplished, and in fact, the more efficient operation of the operation, the more efficient and cost-effective operation of this through the owner having his own individual license is going to allow for continued success and continued improvement and, you know, making sure this business succeeds. We don't have an empty lot with waiting for a new use at some later time. Under the negative criteria, you know, the site has been developed. So I think that's the positive aspect of the D variance requirements under the negative. It's been in use, this site has been in use since 2018. It was, it used to be a towing and a recovery yard, an auto body, an auto shop. I think it was an auto paint, a whole mix of uses back there. So this has accommodated existing and previous auto-related uses. There's no physical change to the site or the operations at all. The surrounding uses and some adjacent uses have been around for a number of years. And so they're not going to be impacted anymore by this particular, you know, request before the board now. And again, the surrounding uses aren't going to be impacted by adding this, this licensing to enable him to just better operate his facility. So the relief can be requested without causing any substantial impact to the public good or the zone plan. Again, the current site was, in use were approved in 2017 and 2022. It advances the goals of the local plan and the MLUL, and it has no negative impacts on them. If you don't buy that, and you say, no, we agree with our planner and we need a full D1, I'll just for belts and suspenders here. The other two things under the Medici standard would be particular suitability and then the reconciliation between its absence from the zoning code and why this is here. Again, under particular suitability, you found the site particularly suitable for the use twice, in 17 and in 22. It's been developed as such and has been working in operation since 2018. No physical changes are proposed. You've got a bus depot, construction and paving, and other types of, you know, larger storage uses around the area. And the existing site design buffers all the activity behind that main building. All you see from the site is the main warehouse building in the driveway. And then, so that's why this site is a great use. It works well, it's been functioning well, and it doesn't have any external impacts around the surrounding properties. And in terms of the reconciliation, it's not inconsistent with your master plan, it's not inconsistent with the municipal land use law. You have your prior approvals, and you also have the 2017 resolution recognize the use as a unique business for dismantling discarded vehicles, removing auto parts and shipping those to others. So this really, this use wasn't anticipated by the governing body in the drafting of the permitted conditional uses because it's kind of unique. And you met your recent master plan reexamination report and talks about the need to relook at your EOD 1 and 3 uses to see if it should be expanded based on new market forces and new development in the area. So I think under the enhanced Medici standard, you could also just see this all as a D1 as well. And that kind of concludes my direct testimony.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Thank you, and thank you, sir, for the testimony to cover once. But I would suggest that you look at it as a D1 use variance. It's hard to tell the difference between what is an expansion of the site if nothing is really changing, right?
I think the permitting is, the only expansion is that you're, you know, this licensing and the relief, you know, kind of like in a raspberry sense, removing the one condition is an expansion of the use.
Are there going to be any additional cars brought on site with this new business?
No.
Well, then it's not an expansion, is it?
If I.
It's a new use.
If I can suggest, the fact that you're now allowing the car sales on site is the expansion.
It's a new use.
I think, no, I think this is the exact same use from 2017 and 2022. The expansion is this relief from the prior condition to go ahead and allow for a used car license to be operated on the site. But at the same time, I think, like, you know, you could also support a finding of a D1 in support of this application. I just don't think we need to go that far, but again, that's my analysis.
I don't need to argue any further.
Mr. Pluckworth, anything? Mr. Hallian?
Not for this witness, sir, thank you.
I think I am having some similar mental gymnastics as Mr. Fox. When this was a previously, it was a D1, we previously had. So this was a use that was non-conforming use, and so how do we get a, D2 is typically reserved for non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming, not for something that received D1 approval.
I think you could find it under the case law that with, when you, whether it's, once you gave the use variance, it is a permitted use under the variance, and so.
It wasn't a pre-existing non-conforming, which is what the D2 is typically reserved for.
There's also some case law that says if it's granted by variance, it's treated the same. But either way, I think you could find a D1. But I just think that the relief we're asking for is this licensing that allows the individual, just the operator, to make his own sales, own purchases from these auto auction sites, which wasn't allowed before. And that, and it's a, we're in this weird merry-go-round of trying to satisfy two checkboxes on a DMV form, and that's why we're here, where nothing else is changing. So it's not a new use, you know, in that sense. It's really just an existing use granted by this board that needs a little more relief so that it can function properly and function efficiently.
It appears that was a, that this is a, this was a material condition that is now seeking to be removed. I, you know, I was not here at that time, but, but, you know, by all accounts, it seems like that was a material condition for a reason, and obviously, you know, these, these conditions are for a reason. So in adding that, you know, we do have to reconcile that as well in how this can be treated as a D2 or D1. I think certainly it feels like in arguing for a D2, we're doing a lot of shoehorning here where if this were really to be counted, you know, as a D1, it seems like this might be held more cleanly. And professionals, please feel free to, you know, intervene at any point if you'd like.
So say, for example, if I.
I'm going to ask you to stop now because I've already offered, and we started at 7:50. It's now 30, 40, 45 minutes. I did say I was going to hold people to their feet to the fire on the time.
Okay.
I don't know that we're clear on this, and you don't have any other witnesses, right?
We do not have any other witnesses, but if I could just.
Well, I'm going to weigh in on this.
Okay.
And it's going to take a while, so. And it's going to take a while. So you want to come back another time, but I'm going to call the timeout now.
Okay.
And we'll reschedule this.
Okay, if we may, before we do, if we, if I can impose on the chair, two things. One, we're willing to either go under the D1 or D2. I am not waiting to either. I think the D1 was established before. I also found the check the box form from the DMV. I don't know if the board wants to see that. I referred to it earlier. And at the bottom, there's a provision that says, you know, is it allowed? And then are there any stipulations? The stipulation stated before is as per the variance, no auto sales permitted on the property. We'd anticipate that if this is granted, when the forms filled out next time, it would say, as per the variance, no more than two cars can be shown at any time, no more than one retail customer, et cetera. Mr. Chair, would you like me to offer this to the board or because we're coming back?
You want to offer it by all means, but I was here for all three of these and you weren't the attorney of record on the other.
Yep.
And Mr., in fairness, Mr. Cheney wasn't either.
Yep.
So some of the members on this board sat through all three of these. The professionals here also did not. So I think we got a long road to hoe yet.
Okay, understood completely. I just wanted to offer this because I'd found it, I can submit.
Bear in mind, he already has an approval to go and get a license with a deed restriction on his property.
Understood.
You're here now asking us to make that go away. I don't know that that's going to happen, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to cancel this now and continue because I've already taken time away from the other two applications.
Understood completely.
With all due respect, sir, I did say that at the beginning.
I appreciate that you gave us the opportunity. I am going to be away October 30 through November 13th, so I just ask we not be rescheduled in that.
I don't know, Dan, are you doing the scheduling or should they call the office?
Probably call Maureen and then Maureen will, Maureen will give you the next second date, yes.
My secretary is, is on vacation, needed vacation with her family. So you know her, I'm sure. So why don't you contact her for a further date and we'll certainly entertain the rest of the application.
I will do that. Thank you so much. I appreciate the time, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
All right, this matter, if you're watching at home, is going to be continued. The date is up in the air at this point. There would be no further notice on this. This is 28-2022Z Interbelt Automotive or an amended de-variants, all right? To be continued. Thank you, sir. All right. Do you need a quick break? We'll take a quick break for the stenographer, five minutes? Okay, five minutes, please, no longer. Thank you. We'll be, we stand in recess. Turn the microphone on, right? We're returning from recess. We're waiting for one board member to come back on the dais and he should be momentarily. I would ask for a roll call at this point, Mr. Hallahan.
Ms. Andrews?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Chevillier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
He's the one that's absent, went to the restroom.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Mr. Stoner's back in the room for the record, counselor. This is 8-2024Z Brixmor Old Bridge LLC. This is the regional commercial zone. This is block 5,000, lot 3. Physical locations, 1030 U.S. Route 9. Tendency changed with restaurant to a salon, major preliminary and final site plan. It was Ms. Smith, but counselor for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Howard Geneslaw from the law firm Gibbons PC. Jennifer Smith was double booked tonight, so I'm standing in for her on this application.
Say your last name once again, sir.
Geneslaw, G-E-N-E-S-L-A-W.
Thank you, sir. By all means, proceed. I'm sorry that I held you up. I'll try and feed a little bit more time onto you, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. I represent Brixmore Old Bridge LLC and we're here tonight on a fairly simple application to re-tenant some existing space. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Old Bridge Gateway Shopping Center at the southwest corner of Route 9 and Ernston Road. Shopping center has been there for decades. It consists of a total of approximately 257,000 square feet. Tonight's proposal is to retrofit an existing tenant space within the center consisting of 7,724 square feet. It was previously occupied by a restaurant and the proposal is for it to be occupied by Phoenix Salon Suites, which is a salon and spa facility that will sub-license 46 individual suites, ranging in size from 108 to 170 square feet. And the purpose of the application, or the business, I should say, that Phoenix Salon Suites is in is to provide barber and beauty and spa type services. Those are permitted uses under the zoning ordinance. They fall under the personal services category, which is defined as including but not limited to barber shops and beauty salons. So examples would be hairstylists, makeup artists, estheticians, barbers, et cetera. The proposed use will not encompass anything that the zoning ordinance doesn't permit. Specifically, personal services are defined to exclude tattoo and microblading and permanent makeup services, massage. So none of those are proposed as part of this application. The application involves internal building modifications only. There's no changes to the site that are proposed. It's simply a change in tenancy. Parking for the center is based on the total square footage at five spaces per thousand square feet. And so parking is not a function of who the different tenants are, it's a function of the total square feet of the center. So from a zoning standpoint, there's actually no change in the required number of parking spaces. In initial discussions with the zoning officer, there was a concern about the intensity of use and how it might impact parking. And so therefore, the matter was referred to the board for site plan approval, which is why we're here tonight. We submitted a parking study. The parking study demonstrates that the parking demand for the proposed Phoenix Salon Suites is less than for the restaurant that it replaces. So therefore, the existing parking supply will continue to adequately accommodate the overall parking demands of the shopping center. The approvals that we're seeking tonight are preliminary and final site plan approval. We did apply for a C variance for parking if deemed necessary for the reasons I just described. Since parking is based on the overall square footage, we did not believe it to be necessary. And the review memorandum also confirms that technically a parking variance is not required. So basically, we're here for site plan approval. So that is a basic overview of the application. I intend to call our traffic engineer who prepared the parking study as our first witness. I also have a professional planner who will further address the intensity issue. So unless there are any questions for me, I would proceed to call my first witness.
By all means, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Alan Lothian as the first witness.
Do you solemnly swear as the truth of the testimony for which you are about to provide?
I do.
Thank you, sir. And can you spell your name for the record?
It's Alan Lothian, A-L-A-N-L-O-T-H-I-A-N.
Mr. Lothian, would you describe your qualifications for the board, please?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm an associate principal with Langen Engineering. I've been a traffic engineer there for over 26 years. I have a bachelor's as a science in civil engineering from Rutgers, a master's of science in transportation from NJIT. I've, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and I've testified before dozens of boards throughout the state, including this one.
I do recognize you, sir, and I recognize your expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lothian, did you prepare a traffic statement in support of this application?
Yes, I did.
And could you please describe for the board what your study entailed and what conclusions you reached?
Gladly. So as you heard from Mr. Geneslaw, we have the Gateway Shopping Center. I think everybody's familiar with it. I'm, I'm going to refer to the Asbeld Site Plan CS 100. I don't know if we have to mark it since it's part of the site plan application.
That's something that was submitted, it's not changed in any way.
You want to mark it up, right?
You want to do it? I mean, it was already submitted.
It has been submitted?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's part of the pack.
It's part, it's part of the plan set, it has not been modified.
It hasn't been modified at all. Gateway Shopping Center, there's 257,685 square feet, plus or minus. There's access via Route 9, Ernston Road, and then there's also the connection to the Old Bridge Square to the south. None of that is changing as part of this. There are no, as you heard previously, there are no site plan changes. The only thing is the re-tenancy of the one 7,724 square foot space that was formerly a restaurant, now it's proposed to be a salon. So when looking at this site, trip generation is based on the overall square footage of the center as a shopping center. That will not change as part of this application. The parking requirement, as Mr. Geneslaw had indicated, does not change as part of this. It's five, the requirement is five per thousand. The site had previously been granted a variant, a parking variance in 2020 for 1,289 parking spaces. Hold on, 1,150 spaces versus the 1,289 that would be required. Again, there's no change to the intensity of the overall shopping center use. What I was asked to do is look at the potential intensity of the salon versus the restaurant. So I, I took that out of the shopping center itself, looked at them as standalone uses and then there is a table in my traffic statement, Table 2. Actually, it just says standalone comparison, but it should be, Table 2, it's on page four of five. And that indicates the 7,724 square foot restaurant, peak hour trip generation, peak hour parking demand and the ordinance parking requirement, if it were standalone, versus the proposed Phoenix Salon Suite salon, same size, what the peak hour trip generation is, peak hour parking demand and ordinance parking requirement is. The difference between the two, between the restaurant to the salon, negative 47 trips, negative 17 occupied parking spaces at any one time and negative 103 spaces required by ordinance for that particular use. So all of that together leads to my conclusion that it's a less intensive use than what was formerly in the space.
When you're saying negative parking spaces, explain what you mean by that.
So I'll, I'll go with the ordinance parking requirement. So ordinance parking requirement for 7,724 square foot standalone restaurant would be 155 parking spaces. The proposed salon would park at, because it's, because it's a service use, it, it is one space per 150 for retail or services that are five or less stores. So again, taking it as a standalone, it would be one per 150 instead of the one per 200, which is required for the shopping center with more than five stores. So it, it's looking at it as more intensive. That would be 52 spaces. So when I was saying there's 103 less parking spaces required as part of this use, that's the 155 required for a restaurant, 52 required for the, for a standalone salon. So that, that's where I get my negative 133 spaces.
So as a result of your analysis, do you have a conclusion as far as the intensity of what's proposed versus what was there before?
So again, looking at it as an overall shopping center, I, I would conclude that there's no change because there's an integrated, it's integrated between uses in, in a shopping center. There's different types of uses, different, different stores, different restaurants. They all work together. They create a certain trip generation. There, there's shared trips between uses, there's shared parking between uses. So when looking at the overall center, I don't, I, I don't see a change. If I take them out and look at them as two separate uses, then I, I conclude that there is, that the salon is a less intensive use compared to a restaurant of the same size.
And do you have an opinion about whether this change in tenancy and change in use will result in there being sufficient parking within the center to serve both what's already there as well as the salon use that's proposed?
There, there is, as I testified to at the previous variance request, there is sufficient parking on the site compared to what the anticipated parking demand is for a shopping center of this size.
Thank you. I have no further direct questions for Mr. Lothian.
Mr. Pluckhorn?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Lothian. I agree with your, and thank you for all the information you provided. I think it's very informative, showing it both ways. And it's indicated by the solicitor that the parking requirements are based upon the total square foot. total square footage of the area, and the area already got a variance for less parking. So therefore, there's no parking requirements in there. I should also, excuse me, there's no parking variances required. There were a few other items that we had, which we can talk about later. There's been no testimony about that regarding, for example, how much water is being used as this facility versus the restaurant use. What are the hours? Are they different? That sort of thing, number of employees, that sort of thing. It's an operational, if you can provide some testimony about the.
Yeah, I mean, we can provide some discussion. I have some of that information that I can provide either now or if you'd prefer to go through the report after the next witness, that's fine also.
Thank you.
Mr. Holland, did you have any questions at this point of comments?
No, Chairman, thank you.
Counselor?
Mr. Lothian, real quick, can you just reiterate the, we said 47 trips less and then the spaces less?
Okay, yes. So it's 47 less trips during peak hour, 17 less occupied parking spaces, and 103 less required spaces per ordinance for standalone use.
Thank you.
Anything further from the witness?
There are a few traffic-related comments in the review letter, but there's some other operational things. So I thought I would move on to my next witness to finish up the planning testimony. And then we'll bring Mr. Lothian back if need be when we work on the report.
Okay. Board members on my left of this witness? No?
It's a beauty salon, and so it was testified before. It's hair, nails. There's a variety of different uses. There's 46 individual proprietors that could be doing a variety of services. That's my understanding.
I mean, the unique thing about Phoenix Salon Suites is that rather than having a single salon, it's actually 46 individual spaces, each one of which is leased out to a professional or a practitioner who basically runs their own business. And so they're able to run their own business in their own space without having the overhead of a larger store, without having employees. So each one is essentially doing their own thing. So you know, you might have manicurists, hairstylists, barbers, whoever wants to lease space there.
How many employees will that be?
Well, there's 46 individual spaces.
And then what about the parking for them?
Well, actually, that's probably more for Mr. Lothian, but each of the spaces will have a licensed professional. They don't necessarily all work at the same time. They can set their own hours. That's another one of the advantages of a use like this, that each proprietor decides when they want to work. They set their own hours, and.
They're independent contractors, just to be clear, right? That's.
Basically, yeah. I mean, it's technically a sub-license arrangement between Phoenix Salon Suites and the individual person, licensed professional, practitioner, whatever you want to call them, who will be operating within the space. And they basically run their own business. And the parking standards in the ordinance are presumably designed to accommodate both employees and customers, just like they would be for the restaurant that was there before and all the other uses in the center.
So those spaces were in your calculation?
They were, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the idea, the concept, instead of like a food court at the mall, this is a cosmetology court.
That's a good way of describing it.
In many places like this, someone would be renting a room for one day a week, not for a full day. They would work on an hourly basis. So that would mean, in many instances, there would be more than one employee in a space. I'm not saying it's going to be for everybody, but there are people who share a space maybe once or twice a week. I only say this because I know what goes on in other states.
Right. Well, it's interesting because the regulations governing this type of activity are actually quite extensive in New Jersey. So the Board of Cosmetology and Hairstyling, is what it's called, has a set of regulations that govern these types of uses, and they require that there be one, what they call in EPL, I believe it's called, which is an experience, or, excuse me, ELP, Experienced Licensed Professional, that has to be in charge of each space. They have to have a certain number of years of experience. Anyone who's operating one of these businesses, they have to apply to the state for a license for the space, in addition to their own professional license if they happen to be a barber or a cosmetologist. So they really can't just be renting out a chair or a space for, you know, an hour or a day. It doesn't work that way in New Jersey, although it may well work that way in other states.
Would they be having, besides estheticians, acupuncturists? I know no tattoos, but acupuncturists as well as estheticians?
You know, I think if it's permitted by the zoning regulations as a personal service, then it would be a possibility. I should also add that in order to get the license for the space that's required, one of the items that must be submitted to the Board of Cosmetology and Hairstyling is a zoning certificate or a letter from the town saying that they don't require a zoning certificate. So ultimately, the town is sort of a gatekeeper, if you will, on each one of these applications to the state for the license to occupy the space, because if someone proposes something that the town doesn't believe is a permitted personal service, then the zoning officer
I was thinking of med spas. Med spas.
I'm not 100% certain. Again, I think if it's a permitted use within the zoning, then it could potentially be something that someone might want to practice.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just say this, because this reduces time in the future. Many of the comments we have in our letter regard to similar issues like this, and as the attorney explained, these are issues that are licenser issues by the state, also the County Department of Health, and also building code, which are not site plan issues particularly. And as the parking is based on the square footage, it doesn't pertain to parking, as Mr. Lothian had testified.
Thank you, sir.
Do you know who's to the left of you and to the right of you, what businesses they are in?
I believe Dollar Tree is.
Dollar Tree is to the left if you're looking at the storefront, and the clothing shop is to the right. I can't remember what the name of the clothing shop is. Those are the two uses on either side.
Inspiration, I think? Inspiration.
Is there a landlord on property or a manager of some sort to control, I mean, the access?
Well, so each person who operates in one of these spaces has access to the facility. There's a break room, there's restrooms, there's a utility room, you know, things like that. I don't believe there's someone who's necessarily resident there at all times, but there's someone who would be available in case there are any issues that arise.
Right, in the event of emergency.
Right, there would be an emergency contact.
Some supervisor or some superintendent or some.
Right, I mean, there's not like a receptionist or someone who works there all day, every day. It's basically each independent contractor, which is the term that was used earlier, that occupies their space. They maintain their space, they decorate their space, so they're responsible for their space.
We'll hear about the hours of operation coming up.
Well, the hours are basically whatever the individual practitioner chooses to practice. They can set their own hours.
Morning and do work?
I mean, theoretically, I suppose they could. Typically, it's business hours. You know, you may have an occasion where maybe someone's getting ready for a wedding, and so they want to come in in the evening the night before. But it's, for the most part, it's business hours.
Okay. And is there a lease generated by Phoenix to each individual?
There is a sub-license agreement that would be between Phoenix and the individual. I haven't seen that document because I represent Bricksmore, the landlord, not Phoenix, the tenant, but they would enter into a sub-license agreement, is what they call it. Correct.
And representing the owners, would they have control over the hours?
I'm sorry, would who?
You represent the owners of the shopping center, correct?
Correct.
Are they going to impose hours?
I think their view is that Phoenix can operate, or the practitioners can operate during the hours that they choose, so long as they're within whatever is permitted under the township's ordinances.
Okay. We'll hear from the next witness.
Okay, then, in that case, I would thank you, Mr. Lothian. And our next witness is Sean Moronski, who is a professional planner, who I'm calling simply to tie up some loose ends as far as the intensity question.
Do you solemnly swear us the truth of the testimony for which you are about to provide?
I do.
Thank you, sir. And can you say your name for the record?
It's Sean, S-E-A-N, Moronski, M-O-R-O-N-S-K-I.
Mr. Moronski, could you please present your qualifications to the board?
Yes. I have a master's in urban planning from New York University, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, a New Jersey licensed professional planner since the year 2000. My license is current and in good standing. I've appeared before many boards, although this is my first time appearing in Old Bridge.
Welcome. We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Moronski, the sort of central theme, starting from when the zoning officer was first approached, up through the comments that were issued ahead of this hearing, had to do with intensity of use. So I would like to ask you, from a planning perspective, now that we've heard Mr. Lothian talk about intensity from a parking perspective, if you could please address the intensity issue from that point.
Well, there are a couple of aspects. Mr. Lothian did go through the traffic and parking aspects, which obviously are the most prominent thing that shows when you come onto the lot. And based on the anticipated trips and parking demand of a restaurant of the size of the space, approximately 7,700 feet, as opposed to the salon use, the personal service use that's being proposed, that use has a lesser intensity. I would also note that a restaurant is more likely to have more pass-by traffic, more impulse, whereas the individuals who are licensed in cosmetology or hairstyling are more likely to be appointment-driven, which I think that means that they can only take a certain number of people for a certain amount of time. So it's much more structured and regulated as opposed to the pass-by impulse nature of a restaurant of that size. So in terms of the operations, in terms of the operations affecting the site overall, and in terms of how the business operates, I believe from a planning perspective, that's what's being proposed is less intense than the restaurant use that could be located there and had been located there.
Thank you. I have no further questions from Mr. Moronski.
Mr. Fox?
No questions.
Mr. Pluckhorn?
The board on my left?
It's 46 suites.
Yes.
That could operate anytime. You're comparing that to a restaurant. If he closes at 10, if he's open during the day, closes at 10, 46 individual stalls or suites. I think it's the opposite. I think you're going to have more traffic.
Well, that's assuming that all of the suites are active at the same time, and each individual operator may operate their own hours. I'm sure the operator, if they had all 46 suites at one time, that would be a great thing, but that's not always the case. Whereas with restaurants, you have peak times, peak times at dinner, peak times at lunch, depending on the type, maybe even at breakfast time. Whereas with this particular use, you have a steady, more orderly use, and it is appointment-driven, given the nature of the professionals and the activity, the profession they engage in.
Appointment, so if 46 suites allocated an hour per person, revolving a lot of people.
Well, that assumes that everybody, every slot is going to be occupied throughout the entirety of the workday. And even from a traffic and parking perspective, there are peak hours, there's ups and down times, people take breaks for lunch, people may not have appointments at a particular time. And this particular use grants the professionals the flexibility to set their own hours. Now, most people will likely work in the normal, typical work hours, spec, say, eight or nine to four to five to six. But what this use does, it gives them the flexibility to be able to cater to a customer, for example, a bride or a wedding party that may need work beforehand, or some other use.
Mr. Izzo's question, I think, how many individuals, how many talented people are we talking about? You're talking about a hairstylist, you're talking about a nail salon, what else? A masseuse?
No. As Mr. Janislaw noted, the use has to comply with the local ordinances, and this falls under the definition of personal services. And personal services excludes several uses, including therapeutic massage. That is distinct and separate.
So what are the others? What else do you have?
So, I mean, you can have a variety of things. You can have hairstylists, you can have barbers, you can have manicurists.
We talked about a stylist, nail salon. What else?
Let me think, look, think about in your own life, right? Most of us have.
You have 45 of these cubicles.
Right.
And the traffic we're talking, Mr. Izzo's point was well-taken. Who are you putting in there? I don't never see a salon with 45 people in there.
Well, again, it's a function of, are all the spaces leased? And are all of the professionals working throughout the day, every day, right? I mean, when you're running your own business, you have the luxury of setting your own hours, and so you may choose to work only mornings, only afternoons, maybe only early evenings.
So we're limited to hairstylist and nail salon? That's all you know?
Cosmetic.
Cosmetic, makeup?
It could be cosmetologist, it could be anything that meets the definitions within your code. Typically, it's going to be personal stylist, hairstylist, barber. And think about in our own lives, we all have probably a preferred hairstylist or barber that we go to, right? Even if it's a larger shop that might employ five or 10 different people, you typically go back to the same person because that's the person that you're familiar with. So you may have multiple people practicing the same profession. You know, there might be multiple barbers, but that doesn't mean that they're all going to be operating at the same time every day. So in reality, it very likely is much less intense than the existing or the former restaurant, right? You know, when you could have tables fully occupied at the dinner hour, you could have people lined up out the door if it's a popular restaurant. And if the operating hours are a concern, I don't think that there is any realistic expectation that these practitioners are going to be coming in at 3:00 in the morning. And if the board is concerned about that, then the board can impose a condition that would prohibit overnight operation, right? I mean, who's coming in at 3:00 in the morning to get their haircut? That's.
Maybe no one, but I think representing the landlord, you might have more interest in the operational hours than we would. Although from a safety aspect, you know, I don't know it's in the best interest when all the shops are be closed in the mall, that one of 46 operators might be, you know, performing a beauty stylist or some other function, might be not only for their own safety, but for the safety of people arriving at the mall. Again, I don't know what the restrictions, I don't think there's any restriction by licensing. I don't think barbering or cosmetology, I don't think they prohibit hours. But I would think from representing the, I would have a concern if this were opened overnight.
And understood, and it doesn't, I don't think it needs to be open overnight. I think the practitioners.
But I would agree with you that there might be a wedding in the morning, and they might want to come in at 4:00 AM to get their hair done, all the bridesmaids, and off to the wedding at 8:00 AM. So I understand that, but I just don't know that it should be so loose that everyone can, everyone obviously has a key to the front door or some access code to get into this property. And there's 46 different salons. I mean, it seems like if it's wide open, it's kind of ripe for some crime or something nefarious that may occur. So I'm suggesting that the property owner might want to regulate that. Mr. Fox?
Your zoning officer pointed out to me there's actually a section that 24-hour businesses, with certain exceptions, are conditional uses in your ordinance under 250-44JJ. And this particular use.
And this particular use, if it's within 250 feet of a residential property or zone, which it is, it cannot be open 24 hours a day unless it's a conditional use variance.
Yeah, and that's more what I, I don't want to deter people from running a business. I think it's great. Small business is the lifeline and the blood that churns our economy. But at the same time, I fear for public safety. I just thought the mall owner, the property owner, would take that into consideration, and perhaps regulate this at some hour unless it's an emergency, or there was some reason, as I brought up, perhaps the bridal party wanted to get there at 4:00 a.m. I don't know. Or maybe they wanted to get there at 11:00 p.m. I don't know.
I mean, I think those are the sorts of examples of flexibility that are desired. I don't think there's any desire or expectation to be open on a regular basis during late-night or overnight hours. I think it's for exactly the kind of situations that you're describing on a, you know, an occasional basis.
Right. And I think we have something covering that anyway, but when it says it can't be open 24 hours, it doesn't say what specific hours, right?
It doesn't.
So it could be, they could work from midnight till noon the next morning. Okay, well, I don't know that I really think you need a condition, but I would hope that...
Understood.
Maybe the homeowner, the property owner would probably take that into consideration. I don't want to see people subjecting themselves to something happening that most of the people in this business, and maybe certainly in nails, is usually all women. I don't see a lot of male nail techs, and perhaps hairstylists, probably both. But I don't want to see a couple of people in there at 3:00 in the morning getting.
Nor do we.
Robbed, so we're.
Point well taken.
So that would be my concern. All right. So maybe if we could kind of do something there without, you know, maybe there's the exception that somebody they understood could do that, but it seems like they're going to have free roam to the property. Am I correct? As you said, there's no superintendent, or there's no landlord or manager on property.
Right. So each practitioner can access the building.
Has a, right.
They would only have access to their own space, right? And presumably also the common areas, the restrooms, the break room, things like that, but not access to the space of other practitioners.
Is there security measures that would be, could be put into place after certain hours, that the cardholder who would have to greet someone to allow them to come in?
I'm sure there are some sort of key card access restrictions.
It's got to be a card that everybody's going to get to use, and they're not going to hand out.
Right. And my understanding is that the doors, you know, the front door, if you will, is not just left, you know, open. It's generally open during business hours, you know, maybe 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And after hours, it's locked. And so as you're suggesting, the practitioner would have to admit someone who is coming in at other than regular business hours. And maybe that's the solution to address the concern.
Yeah, and I'm just looking at from a public safety issue. I think it's a great idea to share the suites to independent contractors, perform their beauty culture. But I do worry about if it is 24 hours, or, you know, if it's going to be overnight. That would be my only consideration.
Understood.
Anybody else? This is your only witness, right?
This is my last witness, correct.
Go ahead. Now's the time.
Every one of those suites, by health standards, will have to have their own sink.
Yes, that's actually required by the Board of Cosmetology and Hairstyling.
But that's much more than a restaurant. I know the restaurant uses a lot of water, but I happen to come from that industry, and the amount of water that's used is tremendous.
We're actually, excuse me, adding a dedicated water service, a two-inch water service, which does not currently exist, in order to provide sufficient water. And I'm being told that it's been approved by the MUA, so that's already approved. So I have nothing further from Mr. Moronski. I think we touched on a number of the questions or comments in the review letters. I know there were some relating to DOT-related matters. One was requesting that we seek a letter of no interest. I understand our engineers have spoken with the townships' professionals, and we've agreed that we will apply to the DOT for a letter of no interest, clearly since there's no physical improvements to the driveways and no change in square footage. There should be no reason why the DOT would not issue a letter of no interest. We will also seek the approval of the Middlesex County Planning Board, because technically Ernston Road is a county road. Again, no physical changes to the exterior, so that should not be an issue. I think the other DOT-related comments, given that there's no DOT jurisdiction here, are probably not really relevant, but if the board or the professionals would like to hear a more detailed response to that, I can ask Mr. Lothian to come back up and address those items individually.
I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but I have one quick one, just because of what was raised with the 24-hour. If it's a 24-hour, if I didn't hear that incorrectly, don't we kind of get pushed into that it becoming a conditional use? I mean, to me, it didn't sound like it was, you know, an optional thing. It was kind of, if you're 24-hour, you're becoming a conditional use. So just, we might need to find a little way of working around it.
Right, but I mean, we're not 24-hour. I mean, there might be occasional late-night or early-morning use, as we talked about, for a special occasion, but that's not the.
But isn't it technically 24-hour? Like, I think it's 24-hour just by way of that.
Well, then.
That's how you're describing it, which I just want to make sure we don't accidentally back into a C2 use, sorry, into a conditional, into a conditional use, and then create more issues here. Because if something is, if you can go in at any time, 24/7, then you are 24/7. I can appreciate, you know, how you're trying to shape it, but.
I mean, just because someone has access doesn't mean they're doing business 24 hours.
What's your advertisement going to be?
This is orderly. Counselor has the floor.
If it's a concern, then we can establish regular hours, maybe, you know, open no later than midnight, no earlier than 6:00 a.m., except, you know, on an occasional basis for a specific type of situation.
I think it just needs to not be 24/7, which, you know, 23, 23/7, you know, I don't think it even needs to be that, unless the board wants it.
I think you're getting to it right there, at your last offer. If we could come up with something that maybe it doesn't open before 6:00 a.m. and doesn't stay open until past midnight, I guess there would be an emergency situation, but.
As long as there's some limited flexibility for the.
Sure, sure.
You know, occasion when there's a need for services based on a, you know, specific circumstance.
This Phoenix, they hold the leases, right? Not the property owner.
Rixmore would be leasing to Phoenix, and then Phoenix sub-licenses, right, to each one of the individual practitioners, correct?
But they would be held accountable to what the landlord would say, correct?
Correct. Well.
You're saying the practitioner, it would be in your, it would be in the subleasing agreement, or your agreements, it would carry on.
Phoenix would sub-license with the practitioner, so that would not be a direct relationship with my client. That's between Phoenix and.
Yeah, just from privy, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Do we have any problems with the list here? Do we go through this, Mr. Fox, or Mr. Pluckhorn, or Counselor? Do you agree with everything that was in here?
Well, a number of the things request testimony, so I think we've addressed a number of them.
On a planning aspect, we just had two things. One, if condition approval, did any new signage comply with the ordinance, which I'm sure you'll agree to.
That's fine.
And that, to the extent that any new improvements are consistent or applicable under the townships' affordable housing residential development fee, affordable housing, that you'll comply with that as well.
To the extent anything is due, of course, that's our obligation, but seeing as how there's no change in the square footage of the building, I don't.
That's not what the ordinance says, is the equalized assessed value of the property.
Right. So, but I mean, simply re-tenanting space, I don't think change is the equalized assessed value of the property, but ultimately, that's up to the tax assessor.
Right. Thank you. That's all they had? Mr. Pluckhorn?
No comments.
So we're comfortable with everything in the memo authored by?
Well, no, there are a number of things relating to the DOT, which we don't really think are relevant, since the DOT doesn't have jurisdiction, but.
Are we going to hash these out tonight? And again, only because I'm coming down, I'm coming to giving you 45 minutes, you've got five left.
Well, I think we're close, so I think we can.
I'm sorry, are you looking for a vote tonight?
We would like to have a vote tonight.
Okay. Let's hash this out quick.
Okay.
And I don't mean to be rude, sir, but.
Yeah, no, I understand, I appreciate.
I'm trying to help you, and you're helping me.
Mr. Lothian, if you could run through the DOT comments briefly, and I'm going to consult with my client for a moment on the errors of operation issue while Mr. Lothian is doing that.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Well, he wants me to stretch, but there is no change in square footage. The DOT is going, there's nothing that triggers a DOT permit at all, because we're not changing the access, we're not changing circulation, we're not changing the size of the, size of the building. So we anticipate, we fully anticipate getting a letter of no interest, which also really isn't necessary, since it's just going to be showing that there's no change in, no change in trips. But we will obtain that, and that pretty much takes care of the majority of the NJDOT comments. There are a couple of site condition comments on there that we already discussed with the, with your board professionals, that we would address with them as compliance items, should you, should you.
So should we give approval, those are going to be worked out, correct?
Correct. With your professionals, correct.
We had that discussion today. We agreed to work those things out also.
Okay, all right. You have a comment?
No comments.
No interest from the fire department?
That's our favorite one.
That's the best one, right?
Exactly.
Mr. Fox, do I need anything else? I'm searching here.
That's all we have.
We got it?
Yes, sir.
Would you work out with the professionals as to a timeframe for safety purposes?
I think we can agree to 6:00 a.m. to midnight.
Let me just see if the board sits well with you. Anybody have a problem with that, if that comes up? Mr. Fox, are you okay? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Andrews.
I just want to know, Phoenix Salon, is it a franchise?
Is Phoenix a franchise? Well, when you say, I mean, it's not like.
Are they in other states, and are they in other areas?
Yes.
How successful are they?
They have about 400 locations across the country. There are currently 21 roughly in New Jersey. The closest ones to here are Cliffwood on Route 35, Woodbridge on Green Street, and East Brunswick on Route 18.
And they're relatively successful.
Well, they have 400 locations, so.
Well, they're closing a whole bunch of targets, and so I just want to know, because I hate to see empty stores if something doesn't work out. And they're all independent contractors, and that's going a step above what you'll see in most salons. Many of your salons today that you see, people rent a chair, and it's much cheaper to rent a chair than it is to be responsible for a whole suite. That's why I asked you if they were going to be able to sublease to other people for a day or two days, because that becomes more traffic, becomes more people. Okay, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Understood.
Thank you.
Flight, go ahead, Mr. Scott.
One question. The advertisement, will it have the times that you discussed, till 12?
Well, what advertisement?
Whatever advertisement you're going to be putting out.
Well, we don't advertise, I mean, Phoenix Salon Suites will rent to individual practitioners, and then it will be up to them to comply with that limitation when they're scheduling their appointments.
Yeah, advertisement to the residents who want to come in for a hairstyle or nails. Would they get an advertisement? How would they get that?
I think it's really up to Phoenix and the practitioners, but at the end of the day, since it's appointment-driven.
So that timeframe will be in that advertisement, that's what you're saying?
Well, I don't know if there are going to be advertisements, but they would be restricted to that timeframe.
I think as long as the building's, you know, accessible from those times and not accessible from the times where it's not supposed to be, that should solve all problems.
Yeah, I would think so. I don't know what kind of advertising Phoenix undertakes, so.
Okay, but it's important they put the time, if we agree.
I mean, being that it's appointment-driven, they just wouldn't accept appointments.
I don't know that we can put that on Phoenix. They probably have the right to do their own advertising. What we're concerned with is the landlord, if we're granting, the site plan has agreed to close between midnight and 6:00 a.m.
Right. And at the end of the day, as I said earlier, the zoning officer has to sign off before they can file for their license to occupy the space with the state, so the zoning officer could specify the hours in that certificate if.
Advertising is all here, anyway.
Indeed.
Rarely mailed. I'm going to go to a public portion, and I'll come back to the board for final comments, and of course, from you, sir.
Thank you.
This is matter 8-2024-Z, for Rixmore Old Bridge LLC. This is, physical location is 1030 U.S. 9, commonly called Gateway Shopping Center. This for tenancy change from restaurant to salon, seeking major preliminary and final site plan for a change in tenancy. Anyone here in the room tonight have any comments or questions? Please raise your hand now or stand. No one has? I'll close the public portions. Let me just see if the board has any problems, then I'll let you wrap up.
Thank you.
Let's settle all the problems now, because you are going to call for a vote. So anything on this side, guys? No. Vice Chair?
No, I'm good.
All right. And Ms. Andrews? And Counselor?
Nothing on my end.
All right. I'll hear your final closing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really one final comment about the consultant reports that talk about the minimum square footage. So there's a concept that the Board of Cosmetology and Hairstylists recognizes called a mini-suite, which is 100 square feet for one practitioner, and all of the proposed spaces here are between 100 and 200, right? So the 350 square feet that's referenced in the comments, that's for a larger facility that can have more than one practitioner. So the mini-suite is what these would be, and so I just wanted to make that clear, that we wouldn't be complying with a 350-square-foot requirement, but rather a 100-square-foot requirement, which is recognized as a mini-suite. And with that, I thank the board for your cooperation and your attentiveness tonight. I think this is a great application to re-tenant some space in the center, and we look forward to hopefully having that facility open if the board sees fit to approve it tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And the worst thing you'd want to see in a shopping center is an open business, so I'm glad.
And the space has been vacant for a while, as I understand.
I understand, I'm familiar with it, and I'm glad that someone is coming forward to use that spot. It is a great location, and if it's approved, I certainly wish the, all the operators in there the best of luck, because it is a service that everyone uses, and it'll be probably very good for the community. Counselor, this is simply for, I thought I read there were some bulk variants in here.
There's no bulk variants.
Not at all. Okay.
Just site plan approval.
Okay. So it's merely for major preliminary and final site plan, right? All right, let's do major preliminary first. Someone so inclined as to move this for approval?
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Andrew's second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes, and I wish you the very best of luck, because I like the idea of it.
Thank you. Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Final site plan? Someone want to move that?
Chevalier, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second, Stoner.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
And Chairman Sullivan.
I stand on my, yes, I stand on my previous comments, I wish them the best of luck. Thank you for you and your professionals for your presentation this evening and cooperating. I'm sorry I tried to rush you a little bit, but we reached the end.
That's okay. It means we all get home sooner. Thank you very much.
Five minutes, please, recess. The final application, I'm going to extend to you the full time. I don't think we have anybody in the public tonight, so I'm going to allow it to go to 10:30, if that's okay with you, Counselor. We stand at recess. Five minutes, please, no longer. Thanks. We stay in recess. Five minutes, please. No longer. Thanks. All right, we have returned from recess. Mr. Holland, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Andrews? Ms. Chevalier?
Here.
Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Mr. Stoner?
Here.
And Chairman Sullivan?
Here. When last we left, we have one more application, board members, for the evening. It's 29-2024Z, E&amp;H Management. It's in the EDO 1 Zone, Block 20000, Lot 10. Physical location, 10 Pleasant Valley Road Mini Warehouse, bifurcated D variants. Applicant proposes a 12,540-foot, square foot mini warehouse with associated site improvements such as parking, driveways, and sidewalks. Lawrence Sacks, Esquire, representing the applicant. Counselor?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lawrence Sacks, on behalf of the applicant, E&amp;H Management. This property is located at Block 20,000, Lot 10, 18 Pleasant Valley Road. It's the corner property at Pleasant Valley and English Town Road. The property is located in the, it's actually a split zone property, so a portion of the property is located in the EDO 1 Zone, and a small portion is also located in the R40 Zone. We're seeking approval tonight on a bifurcated basis for a use variance to operate and construct a 12,540-square-foot mini warehouse, which will be devoted exclusively to the use of Arctic Air, which is actually the property which is across the street and the owner, and the contract purchaser of this property. So it will be strictly used by Arctic Air. We require a use variance. We're bifurcating this hearing, so if the board acts favorably on this application this evening, we will come back to you at a later date, hopefully very shortly, with a site plan application. I will state that we have provided a fairly comprehensive site plan already in order to satisfy my two favorite cases, the house of fire and Scholastic Bus Case, that, so the board at least has enough information to know about what's going to operate on this site and how it's going to operate. But we are only seeking a use variance this evening. I do have several witnesses. I do have Mr. Ross Albert, who's seated to my right, who is the principal of Arctic Air. Our engineer is Ryan McDermott. We have our traffic engineer, Justin Taylor, who's here if there's any traffic questions. Our architect is also available, Mr. Mike Testa, and we also have our professional planner, Colleen McGurk, who will be our last witness. So, Mr. Chairman, with that said, if we can have Mr. Albert sworn in, he'll briefly explain the operations and what's going to happen at this particular warehouse.
Sir, do you solemnly swear us the, do you solemnly swear us the truth of testimony for which you are about to provide?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, and can you just state your name for the record?
Ross Albert.
R-O-S-S-A-L-B-R-E-T?
A-L-B-E-R-T.
Albert, sorry. Thought I said that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chaney. So Ross, you're the principal of Arctic Air, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, if you can give a little history briefly of what Arctic Air does, what occurs at your present location, and what's going to be the use of this property across the street on 18 Pleasant Valley Way, Pleasant Valley Road.
Yeah, so I'll start, first start to talk about the business, right? So we're a 48-year-old family heating, cooling, plumbing, electrical business. My dad started this business 48 years ago. He was a high school math teacher from Staten Island. Needed a job to supplement his income, started this little family business. We moved to Old Bridge in 2008. We had a very small business at the time. We tent outfitted that space at 1 Pleasant Valley Road for a period of time, and we quickly outgrew that space. In 2022, we purchased a piece of property in Marlboro to leave Old Bridge and build a space that was 50,000 square feet, but then when the property came to be across the street, we had very good findings, and we were super happy to be a part of Old Bridge and service the community. So we vacated that space in 2022, sold that property, and now want to move back to Old Bridge, because it's much better, more conducive for our business to be housed in a very similar location for across the street, which my father owns at 1 Pleasant Valley Road, and the application that we have here tonight for be across the street. So what's going to actually be at that location is our installation division and warehouse. So as you, as you know, we have 45 employees in this space that's there. We're going to need ample parking, ample spaces for trucks and vehicles, and then warehousing of heating, cooling, equipment to be housed in that warehouse in that location. It's important for us to move back to Old Bridge and continue to stay here in Old Bridge. It's been, to run a business in this town is, it's amazing to be here. So we're just so grateful that the property across the street came to be, and we appreciate your time, and I just want to say thank you for this evening.
Okay, and in terms of that new building that's going to be constructed, the 12,540-square-foot building, part of it's going to be dedicated to office. The bulk of it will be for storage of HVAC parts, equipment. You're also going to use it as a training facility?
That's correct.
For your technicians? All right. Are you going to store any hazardous materials in that building?
We are not.
All right, and in terms of the hours of operation, what will the hours of operation be at the new facility?
So Monday through Friday, it's from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening, and then on Saturdays and Sundays, it's from 7:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening.
Okay, and in terms of the vehicles that are going to be on this site, what types of vehicles will be parked in the parking lot?
So there are personal vehicles. There are like four transit vans or GMC vans as well, and 15-foot box trucks.
All right, so in terms of parking that's going to occur, they're nothing larger than a 15-foot box truck?
That's correct.
Okay, and in terms of deliveries, how often do they occur?
Once a day.
Once a day, and what type of vehicle brings them?
53-foot tractor trailer.
All right, and you have, and I know our engineer will talk about it, but there is a loading dock at the rear of the property.
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions of Mr. Albert. I know our engineer can give you a nice layout of what's being proposed here, but certainly he's available for any more questions.
I'll just see if the professionals have any personal questions or, before we get into anything technical?
No questions from a planner. No questions. Just give me the operating hours one more time.
So Monday through Friday, it's from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM, and then Saturday and Sunday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions on my left? The principal?
EDO 1 indicates to permit a small scale, a mix of office, retail, and light industrial uses. Small scale. What part of the large scale? Is that going to the other zone? The R3?
The R, that's the R40, Mr. Scogno. My planner will talk about that, but the only thing that's going in the R40 is parking. That's it. The building itself is going to be in the EDO 1 Zone.
On the EDO 1?
Yeah, and that's permitted. And you know what? You just raised a question. I had one more question for Mr. Albert. Are you going to do any maintenance of vehicles on this site?
No.
Okay, I know that was a question that was raised in the report. Okay.
You no longer have property across the street, right?
We do.
Oh, you still have, you have that as well?
Correct. My father owns that.
Okay, that's all. Nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ross. If I can call Ryan McDermott, and we'll have him sworn.
Do you solemnly swear us the truth of testimony for which you are about to provide?
I do.
Thank you, sir, and can you just spell your name for the record?
Sure. Ryan McDermott, R-Y-A-N-M-C-D-E-R-M-O-T-T.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. McDermott, if you could give the board the benefit of your professional education and background?
Absolutely. Licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. License is in good standing. I graduated from Rutgers University with a Bachelor's of Science in Engineering. Principal Dynamic Engineering. I've been with the firm for about nine years now. Over the course of that time, I've managed, designed dozens of commercial, industrial, residential projects. I was last before this board in December of 2023.
You're recognized as by this board, and we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McDermott, I know you have some exhibits that you're going to testify to, but if you can just give us a brief description of the site and what's being proposed?
Absolutely. I'd like to start with existing conditions if I could. For that reason, we've prepared this aerial map exhibit with today's date, prepared by my firm. For general orientation purposes, the north arrow points towards the top of the page. The property is centrally located. It's a unique L shape, if you could follow my cursor here. It has approximately 480 linear feet of frontage on Pleasant Valley Road, across the top of the property there, and approximately 207 feet of linear frontage on Old Bridge English Town Road, off to the left side here. The property is about 3.75 acres in size. As you've heard, it is split zoned with the EDO 1 Zone on the north side and the R40 Zone on the southeast portion. So this first chunk here along the top is the EDO 1. This rectangular-shaped portion here, split by that blue line, is the zone line. This is the R40 Zone down here. Under existing conditions, the property is developed with a two-story dwelling in the northeast corner, a masonry garage located south of that dwelling, and a shed on the westerly side along Old Bridge English Town Road. The majority of the site is cleared and consists of gravel, serving as an outdoor storage use and parking area, which is largely surrounded by fencing along the frontages and along the perimeter. A portion of the site at the southeast corner, in the R40 Zone, is wooded and contains freshwater wetlands. The wetlands have been delineated, and the applicant will have to file for a letter of interpretation with the DEP to verify the extents of those wetlands, as well as the associated transition area. Existing access to the site is provided via a full movement asphalt driveway located along Pleasant Valley Road at the northeast corner of the site. With respect to the surrounding area and adjacent uses, to the north is Pleasant Valley Road with the Arctic Air Conditioning Headquarters across the street and the Goddard School beyond that. To the south and east is a mix of commercial and residential uses with wooded area beyond. To the west is Old Bridge English Town Road with a truck service and repair facility on the opposite side of the street and wooded area beyond that.
Mr. Chaney, I think we probably have to mark this as A1.
Yeah, we'll mark that as A1's aerial exhibit, or aerial map exhibit.
And that's A, this is a colorized rendering of the site plan, Mr. McDermott?
That's correct. This is a site plan rendering, again with today's date, prepared by my firm. It is just a colorized version of Sheet 3 of the use variance set. Again, for orientation purposes, the north arrow points towards the top of the page here. We're here tonight seeking use variance approval for the construction of a mini warehouse building with associated parking, loading, driveways, and other site improvements. The applicant has decided to bifurcate the application again, so it's just the use variance approval tonight, no site plan portion of that. The mini warehouse, which is defined as being less than 15,000 square feet, is a permitted use within the EDO 1 Zone, but not in the R40 Zone. The principal structure associated with the development will be located in the EDO 1 Zone, and the only improvements proposed within the R40 portion of the site pertain to the accessory parking area. The premise of our application and the reason we require that use variance approval is because of this overflow parking area here. As you are here tonight throughout our testimony, we exceed the number of parking spaces required, not because we're trying to maximize the development area, but because the property is uniquely positioned directly across the street from the applicant's headquarters. He's looking to expand his successful business operations here in Old Bridge. You hear that he entertained a site in Marlboro, but decided to drop that when this property was listed for sale. And he knows exactly what this facility is going to require in terms of parking. The mini warehouse building is 12,540 square feet and consists of 2,250 square feet of office space, primarily in the west side of the building, and 10,290 square feet of warehouse space. For access, we're proposing one full movement driveway along Pleasant Valley Road in the northeast corner here, and one full movement driveway along Old Bridge English Town Road in the southwest corner of the site here. We're proposing a total of 57 parking spaces, whereas 15 are required. We are also proposing electric vehicle make-ready spaces on the west side of the building in accordance with state and local standards. There were no comments from the fire official regarding the preferred location of those charging stations. However, if necessary, we could locate them in the landscape islands on either side of the parking row here and here. I do know that was a comment which came up in the Planning, Engineering, and Traffic Review Letter. With respect to circulation and loading, we're proposing 24-foot-wide drive aisles around the building and an oversized aisle east of the building to allow for turning maneuvers associated with the loading operations here. We're proposing four overhead loading doors along the easterly facade, and each has a 13 and 1/2 by 30-foot loading space adjacent to the door. We're proposing one 70-foot-long loading space adjacent to an AT-grade loading dock at the southeast corner. That's this notch in the building you see here. And the site has been designed to accommodate a WB67, largest tractor trailer on the road in New Jersey, while the smaller overhead doors are intended to serve an SU30 box truck without interfering with the adjacent drive aisle. So as those vehicles are staged in their respective loading areas, it will not interfere with the adjacent drive aisle. To address a few of the review letter comments related to circulation, one comment suggested delineating the drive aisle east of the building with additional pavement markings, just because it is so wide. Another requested no truck signage adjacent to the parking areas to make sure trucks are not entering the parking area on the west and north sides of the building. There was also a comment about providing vehicle circulation plans, including one for a fire truck. We have run the fire truck. We have one of the large tractor trailers. They can all fit here. The applicant would be happy to satisfy each one of those comments as part of the site plan application. Comment 32 in the letter discusses the site triangles in relation to the stop bar locations. So ASHTO requirements actually say that the site triangle should be located 14 and 1/2 feet back from the edge of the traveled way, regardless of where the stop bars are located. However, even if we were to take our site triangles, push them back to be 10 feet behind the stop bars, as the letter suggests, none of the onsite pavement areas, none of the onsite circulation parking areas would be located within that site triangle. So I still, I still think we would have a safe turning maneuver at those driveways. This comment also requested that we show a site triangle for the stop-controlled intersection west of the building, right here. We anticipate this would be a very low-trafficked area and one which is only traversed by employees. Again, this is not a commercial facility, so it's not like you have customers coming in who are not familiar to the site. However, to the extent that there are any encroachments upon that site triangle, we would look at reconfiguring the drive aisle slightly, just making tweaks just to make sure that safe turning maneuvers can be provided. With respect to refuse and recycling, we're proposing a 10-by-20 trash enclosure east of the building. It will contain a 6-foot fence and would be surrounded by evergreen trees around the perimeter to avoid the need for variance relief from Section 250-54. perimeter to avoid the need for variance relief from Section 250-54F. I know that came up in the review letter, so did just want to put that on the record. Trash and recycling would be picked up by a private hauler on an as-needed basis, but that's usually once or twice per week. This layout does necessitate some bulk variance relief, which I will touch upon here and will be covered more in greater detail by our planner later on. We are seeking variances for maximum front yard setback along both roadways. 99.2 feet is proposed along Old Bridge Englishtown Road, while 60.9 feet is proposed along Pleasant Valley Road. A maximum of 50 feet is required. And this sort of ties into the street buffer relief that we're seeking. A 15-foot buffer is required along Pleasant Valley Road, whereas 10.9 feet is provided to the parking spaces. And a 50-foot buffer is required along Old Bridge Englishtown Road, whereas 27.4 feet is provided. And again, I'll refer back to the maximum front yard setback requirement of 50 feet and a minimum front yard buffer require of 50 feet. So they're sort of contradictory here. It would not be feasible to satisfy both of those buffering and setback requirements. So we attempted to strike a balance between those two. Lastly, we require variance relief from Section 250-54D1 for non-residential buffer. A 50-foot buffer is required for non-residential uses when adjacent to existing single-family uses, whereas the proposed development provides approximately 25 1/2 feet to the southerly property line, which is adjacent to Lot 9. Under existing conditions, that buffer is about 26 feet, so approximately the same as it will be under proposed conditions. And we haven't put together a grading plan. That would be put together as part of the site plan application. That will determine our limit of disturbance. But we would intend to keep as much existing vegetation here along that southerly property line as we could. To the extent that some of that needs to be cleared for grading, we would plan to replant that and keep a dense vegetative screen to Lot 9 to the south. We're also proposing to remove existing improvements, including a driveway and a garage, from the 50-foot buffer from Lot 11 on the easterly property line. So we're removing those improvements and providing a 50-foot compliant buffer to the east now as well. There was a comment in the review letter about verifying the non-critical area. While there's no such requirement for the EDO 1 zone, the R40 zone has a maximum non-critical area requirement of 65%... Excuse me, a minimum requirement of 65%. And this area includes areas which are not freshwater wetlands or buffers, floodways, lakes, ponds, and steep slope areas. The amount of non-critical area just in the R40 zone under existing conditions is approximately 37% under that 65. However, because we are not proposing any disturbance to the wetlands or the wetlands buffers, it would remain as an existing nonconformity under proposed conditions as well. So it's an existing nonconformity. We're not touching that critical area at all. Moving on to design waiver relief, there are a few related to the architectural elements, both interior and exterior, which we'll hear about from our architect, Mr. Testa. We are seeking relief from Section 250-381A7E related to sidewalks. So regarding the onsite areas, we have sidewalk along the westerly and northerly facades of the building. However, because this southeastern parking area is not directly connected, we do require that design waiver relief. Again, not a commercial development, so it's not like you have customers trying to get to the front of the building. This is warehouse employees. They know what they're doing. They know where to cross. They know when to cross. Regarding the frontages, and starting with Pleasant Valley Road, based on aerial imagery, there is no sidewalk at all along Pleasant Valley Road. That's from our intersection here with Old Bridge Englishtown Road, all the way down east to Marlborough Road. I did not see any sidewalk along that entire stretch of Pleasant Valley. As it relates to Old Bridge Englishtown Road, between our site here, this intersection, and down to Texas Road, which is about 1.3 miles south, there's only one property with sidewalk in that entire stretch, and it only extends about 100, 120 linear feet. So for that reason, along with the prevalence of the wooded area in the vicinity and the lack of commercial developments, which are catered towards pedestrian traffic, the applicant is not proposing sidewalk along the frontages at this time. Section 25073D6 requires landscaping adjacent to facades in the public view. While we do not have foundation plantings up against the building, during the site plan phase, we would intend to provide landscaping along our frontages in those buffer areas with a mix of trees and shrubs to soften the visual impact from that public view. So in these areas here, we would intend to provide vegetative screening, which would serve that same purpose of breaking up the visual aesthetics of the building from the public view. And then finally, there was a comment in the review letter about barbed wire fencing. There is existing barbed wire fence in a portion of the southeast area here. The majority of it is located in the wetlands and the buffer area. So we're not proposing to remove it, except where outside of the regulated area. Where it's in the wetlands or the wetlands buffers, we can't touch that. But to the extent it extends beyond those areas, we would be removing the barbed wire That is all I had for my direct.
All right, just a couple of questions, Ryan. I know there was a comment in the staff report about noise. The only activity that's going to occur in the parking lot is actually just parking of vehicles and obviously, once a day, loading and unloading, perhaps by a tractor-trailer at the loading dock. But do you feel that we'll be compliant with the state noise requirements in terms of decibel levels during the daytime? And of course, we don't have to worry about nighttime because we don't have any evening hours.
That's correct.
Okay. And in terms of the memo from the Bureau of Fire Prevention, Fire District 3, dated September 25, 2024, do you have any problems in complying with any of those issues raised in that memorandum?
No problem at all. As I previously mentioned, we did run a fire truck just to make sure it would work on this site, and we can comply with all of those comments.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions of Mr. McDermott. Obviously, if the board acts favorably on this application, we're going to be back in front of you on site plan. There could be site plan considerations that your staff may come up with at that time, but certainly, you know, we've given... I think we've given you enough, at least with respect to this plan.
Understood. Thank you. Mr. Pluckhorn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just have one comment regarding the access onto Old Bridge Englishtown Road. That's a county roadway. Has there been any discussion or contact with the county about that?
We haven't filed that application yet. That would be filed along with our site plan application, but we fully recognize we would need their approval.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fox, anything of this witness?
We have some testimony regarding number 30 on our letter. How many employees would be involved in this facility?
Ross can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 45.
That's correct.
You talked about the hours of operation and the operations facility. You going to have any material stored outside the building?
No. And no hazardous materials, I think Mr. Albert testified to. And there'll be no activities outside. It's just obviously, the outdoor area will just be for parking.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we... Our letter has a lot of different comments regarding site plan issues and waivers and things like that, which may or may not change, some of them for informational purposes only, and we've had testimony about this. To the extent... I'm not sure to what extent, other than the use variance and the bulk variance requiring that we're talking about. For example, you'd asked about questions regarding getting waivers or variances from sidewalks or the design of the architecture of the building, that sort of thing. Do you really want them now, or should we wait till site plan for that?
Well, certainly, you know, we'd like to have the design waivers now. I think the variances certainly can be granted as part of this application. And certainly, if something arises during site plan, you know, if a new variance is triggered, we certainly can deal with that. But I think the design waiver, we're really... The primary design waiver really deals with the sidewalk. I mean, we're going to provide the landscaping as part of site plan. But certainly, there are no sidewalks really anywhere within the vicinity, so we would request that waiver, Mr. Chairman.
That's... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.?
All the comments I had right now at this time.
Oh, okay.
Chairman, no, I have no comments. Thank you.
Counselor?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
If that were to be granted, it would be conditional, correct?
Yes.
I mean, you still have to come back for site plan.
That's true.
Good, Mr. Fox? Okay. All right. Board members on my left, the professional engineer.
Excuse me. On the D variance, I'm familiar with that, but the bifurcated D, doesn't that call for a separate application?
We're going to have to... Right. We'll have to file another application for site plan.
You have to file another application?
Yes.
And that application is for?
That would be for preliminary and final major site plan.
Okay, thank you. And what about lighting and signage?
That would all be part of the site plan application.
Thank you.
Right, sure. I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have the architect, Mr. Mike Testa.
Sure.
Let him briefly show you what the building will look like and what the floor layout will be.
Do you solemnly swear us the truth of testimony for which you are about to provide?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Can you set your full name for the record?
Sure. First name is Michael, last name Testa, T-E-S-T-A.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Testa, if you can just briefly give the board the benefit of your education and professional background?
Yes, I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, 1991, bachelor of architecture, licensed architect since 1996 in good standing. Principal architect, Michael V. Testa, architect, Manalapan, New Jersey, since 2002, and I've had the pleasure of testifying in front of the board numerous times.
Yes, he is recognized, and we accept his expertise.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mike, if you don't mind, I know you've got a couple exhibits, which I believe were part of this submission, so if you can go through them and identify what's being proposed.
The building we have in front of you, as we indicated, is a small warehouse building. It's 12,540 square feet with a 2,250-square-foot component of office space on the Old Bridge Englishtown side of the road. We have this left side here facing Route 527 and Pleasant Valley Way going across here. As you can see, the building is pretty simple. We have office in the front. The rear is going to be storage, training, and all other aspects of the business that Mr. Albert indicated. As you can see in the back here, we have four overhead doors for the box truck loading and unloading. And in the recessed area of the building, we have a larger overhead door with a man-door access for loading and unloading for the larger trucks. It's going to be an open steel-framed building, non-combustible. I don't believe a sprinkler system will be required for a building of this size. If it is required, we would provide that at a later date when we design the building. I'd like to move to Sheet PB2, which is the building elevations. The elevation on the top of the drawing in Sheet PB2, which I'm calling a front elevation, is the elevation facing Pleasant Valley Road. The building to the right is Old Bridge Englishtown Road. We have a continuous cultured stone base on the building with a corrugated metal veneer, both complementary colors. This will be earth tones of like a light beige and a darker brown blend of stone at the bottom. We'll have a white trim on the building with a different color roof. We have trim elements around the windows and doors throughout the building. The same treatments are carried across to the Old Bridge Englishtown Road elevation, which is a little more ornate with storefront glass, ornate trim around it, and again, with a corrugated accent metal. We have signage located up above the main entrance of the door that would be conforming with the local ordinances. And again, if you go towards the rear of the building where the overhead doors are, you can see it's broken up with multiple doors, trim, cultured stone, and earth-tone color metal panels. And again, throughout on the backside of the building with the same materials at work. The building is going to have a ridge in the top of the building, a high point, which is 30 feet above grade. It's going to slope left and right to gutters on either side. It'll go to an underground water detention system that'll be designed by Dynamic Engineering. Other than that, it's a fairly simple building, and there's really not much more to the design that I can elaborate on unless you have any questions.
Mr. Testa, just one question for me. On... I guess it's Amendment Number 13 on Page 6. There's a comment about Section 250-73D3 requires that all major entrances to buildings be properly identified with architectural elements, such as recessed entryways, projected overhangs, and porticoes. None of these elements appear to be proposed. Do you have a solution for that?
Yeah, we can clear... This is the elevation that we're talking about. The main entrance is your main entrance door here. We were discussing earlier as putting a canopy, like a flat metal canopy in accent color with angled rods back to the building, with some illumination underneath to illuminate the sidewalk into the building. I think that would satisfy that request.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, pretty simple warehouse building. I don't have much more of Mr. Testa.
You would work with the professionals on that matter.
Yes, we will.
Mr. Fox?
No further questions?
Mr. Pluckhorn? And Mr. Hollihan?
No questions, Chairman.
Counselor? On my left?
No question.
I have a question. Do we have any sprinkler system in this?
Building of this size, I do not believe that requires a sprinkler system. If the code does require, we will have one. It's a non-combustible building under the square foot requirement for the type of use, so I do not believe it requires one. But again, when we do a full code analysis, and it does deem to require one, it will be fully sprinkled.
Anybody else on my left?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have my traffic engineer here. I don't believe, unless your professionals want to hear from our traffic engineer, I can... There were a few traffic comments, but I'll leave that up to your professionals.
Want to go with the planner first?
We can go with the planner. Let's do that. Okay. That's fine.
Good evening.
Good evening. Counselor?
Do you solemnly swear us the truth of testimony for which you are about to provide?
I do.
Thank you. Can you set your full name for the record?
Colleen McGurk, M-C-G-U-R-K.
Thank you.
Ms. McGurk, if you could give the board the benefit of your professional background and education?
Yes, thank you. I received my Master's in Urban Planning from Boston University in 1996. I then started my current planning mostly from the municipal end. I opened my company, Swick Stoll &amp; McGurk, in 2019. I have since testified before multiple townships, including Monroe, East Brunswick, Metatchin, to name a few.
Did you miss us?
No, I did. Actually, that was the very first time I testified.
Okay.
Back in 2010, before I started my company with Jonathan Halber. My license is current, and I'm a member of AICP.
Thank you. Accept your credentials.
All right, Ms. McGurk, I know we require a D1 use variance, also some bulk variances and design waivers. If you could give the board the benefit of your analysis as to that.
Okay, thank you. In preparation for this testimony, I have reviewed the land development ordinance, the Old Bridge Township master plan land use element, adopted in 2011, and multiple master plan reexams, the application, the use variance plan by Dynamic Engineering, architectural plans by Michael Testa, and board professional reports, and performed a site inspection. The subject property, located at 18 Pleasant Valley Road, is a corner lot located at the intersection of Pleasant Valley Road and Old Bridge Englishtown Road, AKA County Route 527. Lot 20,000, Lot 10, is 3.75 acres and is developed with an existing two-story residential dwelling, accessory structure with an addition, a shed, and a large gravel parking lot. It is located within the EDO 1 Economic Development Opportunity Zone District, which was recommended in the 2011 master plan and adopted by ordinance in 2015. The EDO 1 zone permits mini warehousing, including self-storage and flex warehousing, limited to 15,000 square feet, and mini warehouse and office for electricians, carpenters, plumbers, woodworking, cabinet makers, and similar trades. Therefore, the mini warehouse is a permitted use, but the proposed parking lot expansion consisting of 23 stalls would be located in the portion of the property that is within the R40 residential zoning district. Therefore, the proposed development requires a D1 use variance. The purpose of the EDO 1 zone is to permit on a small scale a mix of office, retail, and light industrial uses to allow Old Bridge Township to attain the goals of accommodating market forces, increasing the local ratable base, expanding the local and regional job space, providing a more diverse mix of goods and services to residents and businesses within the municipality and region, achieving an improved balance of residential and non-residential development within the municipality, and utilizing suitable land for development in a more efficient, functional, and aesthetic manner, while controlling and managing highway access and traffic congestion, minimizing impacts on adjacent and nearby residential development, and protecting environmentally sensitive areas. That's how it's defined in the Old Bridge ordinance. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing non-conforming residential dwelling and accessory structures and construct a new two-story, 12,450-square-foot mini warehouse facility. The property would include the paved parking lot for 57 vehicles, five loading spaces, landscaping, three EV charging stations, two ADA handicap spaces, and a 10-by-20 trash enclosure. The new facility will be utilized by Arctic Air directly to the north, which needs additional space for the existing business to properly function and expand. The surrounding uses consist of Arctic Air's warehouse office space and Goddard Daycare Center to the north, residential uses and a recycling center to the east, residential uses in a wooded area to the south, and a truck-trailer repair use and woods to the west. The southern portion of the lot, Lot 10, is adjacent to Lots 4 and 5, which contains A&amp;M LLC, a farm, which consists of five or six accessory structures and a residential dwelling, and firewood is sold from this property. I have a short PowerPoint presentation, if we could put that up? Just showing.
So this computer doesn't have a PowerPoint license?
Oh, my God. Really?
We can dispense with that.
Okay, well, it showed the aerials and a lot of the commercial uses and industrial uses and their appearance, which is not gonna be as attractive as this proposed use. So, yeah, I was gonna say.
You can use that.
Yeah, it doesn't go as far down.
You're gonna have to bring the mic with you. Is there portable up there? Yeah.
Thank you. This doesn't show as far down on 527 as my really amazing PowerPoint presentation showed. But this is a recycling center. There's a dentist office across the street. There's a couple of what appears to be residential uses, but the back is cleared with a lot of vehicles, but it doesn't have any business registered. There's another commercial facility over here. And further down, there's an automotive shop. There's the farm that I mentioned. There's Thai landscaping, which is, I think this lot over here has Thai landscaping. There's Peterscape Land Clearing and Recycling, I mentioned that. Outdoor Living and Water Gardens, Reno Construction, Levin Raphael Inc., Kurtz Trailer Center, all further to the south, all very industrial-looking commercial uses.
Ms. McGurk, before you sit down?
Hi, I'm Ed Fox, the planner.
Could you define or describe or pull your finger on where the EDO zone is? And what uses are in the EDO zone versus what aren't?
Just on the property or? You're not gonna get picked up unless you use the.
Zone. Not just the property. What's in the zone?
Well, the testimony that I just gave was to give an idea.
They didn't say what was in the zone versus what is in another zone. And the application form didn't identify with the zoning district.
Okay, well, just this property is in the EDO1 zone, and then that zone continues up to the north. There's the R120 zone and the R40 zone surrounding this area.
About across the street to the left. What zone is that in?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall. I think it's R120.
What I'm getting to is how can your testimony say that this is compatible or not compatible to other uses in the zone or the purpose of the zone if you can't explain where the zone is?
I was giving a character of the area and that there's a lot of commercial uses in this area. But no, this lot is the EDO1 zone and continuing north. And then the surrounding areas, the R120 zone and the R40 zone.
Just for some context, I do have some knowledge of this particular area of Old Bridge. I could tell you that the property that's across the street, where there appear to be a lot of tractor-trailers and trucks.
Parked.
That's also in the EDO zone, so. So directly across the street.
Mr. Chairman, this is incomplete information. We'll get to it a little bit later, but.
The EDO zone does continue. There's a portion of the EDO zone further down on 527 also.
Can we get, you don't happen to have the zoning map?
I don't have a zoning map, no. I know a good portion of English.
In my PowerPoint display.
I can pull it up, Chairman.
Thank you.
Ms. McGurk, while we're pulling that up, why don't we continue on with the testimony and talk about the justification for the D1 use variance?
Okay. Okay, well, a little more description. The proposed parking area is 48.3 feet from Lot 9 and approximately 58 feet from Lot 8, which are to the west, and 55 feet from Lot 11, which is to the east. These three lots are residential and would be most impacted, but there are significant setbacks which reduce or eliminate any negative impacts. And as you can see, you saw from the use variance plan, the rear of Lot 11 is mainly wooded. No special reasons D1 use variance can be granted without showing that such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. There are sufficient special reasons for the granting of D1 variance under two broad circumstances: when the refusal to allow the project would impose on the applicant an undue hardship and/or when a proposed project carries out a purpose of zoning. This application advances several purposes of the MLUL, Municipal Land Use Law. Purpose A: to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. The existing Arctic Air business is in need of additional land to help the business function and be successful. It is a permitted use in the EDO1 zone and is similar to many of the businesses in the area. Purpose C: to provide adequate light, air, and open space. The applicant is proposing the construction of a new building, which will provide adequate light, air, and open space to the site and surrounding area and will maintain a portion of the lot as undeveloped. Purpose G: to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. The applicant is proposing to utilize an existing underdeveloped lot. The development will have little to no negative impact on the surrounding residential and commercial neighborhood. The proposed use will provide an adequate buffer to the surrounding uses, and the uses will be able to function as intended in their respective zones. Any environmentally sensitive areas will be protected and preserved. Purpose I: to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. The proposed development will provide a better layout. The gravel parking lot will be paved. Gravel lots do not conform to the ordinance and require a design waiver. The existing structures are older and in poor condition and will be replaced by a well-designed structure and landscaping. Purpose N: to promote utilization of renewable energy resources. The applicant is proposing to install three make-ready vehicle charging stations. In Medici versus BPR Company, the Supreme Court singled out promotion of the general welfare as the purpose that most clearly amplifies the meaning of special reasons. As per Cole versus Mayor of and Council of Fair law made clear, there must be a finding that the general welfare is served because the use is particularly fitted to the particular location for which the variance is sought. In the context of the positive criteria, site suitability is not concerned with ordinance zoning criteria, but is instead focused on why the location of the site within the municipality or region is particularly suited for the use despite the zoning and/or what unique characteristics of the site itself make it particularly appropriate for the proposed use rather than the permitted use. This is a corner lot on a busy county road. The portion of the lot that exists within the EDO1 zone has roadway access from both County 527 and Pleasant Valley Road, which is ideal for commercial use. The portion of the lot within R40 zone is landlocked, only has access through the commercially zoned portion, lacks width, and due to the configuration is not well-suited to residential. According to Medici versus BPR Company, the first prong of the negative criteria requires that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. In this respect, the statutory focus is on the variance's effect on the surrounding properties. The Board of Adjustment must evaluate the impact of the proposed use variance upon the adjacent properties and determine whether or not it will cause such damage to the character of the neighborhood as to constitute substantial detriment to the public good. It is my professional opinion that there will be no negative impact on the character of the neighborhood or the adjacent residential uses as the applicant has taken steps to mitigate any potential impact. The applicant is proposing a new building that will comply with the majority of the zone requirements. This type of use is a low-intense use, will not produce noise disturbances, and is viewed as compatible with residential uses since the township zoned it EDO1 in 2015. The southern portion of the lot, which is still zoned R40, is landlocked and encumbered by potential environmental constraints. And the proposed parking area, which only takes up a small portion of the lot, most of which is currently cleared, will have little to no negative impacts, and the remainder of the lot will be left in its current state, wooded. This is a good solution to a lot that is split-zoned, which is never ideal. The second prong that must be proven is that the proposed use does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The majority of the development is within the EDO1 zone is a permitted use. The R40 portion, again, is landlocked and would be difficult to develop as residential. In further support of the use variance, Cox states, and I quote, "Hardship may also arise out of a split-lot zoning. This occurs when a zoning boundary runs through a piece of property so that, for example, the portion of the fronting on a street is zoned for commercial use, but the rear portion of the lot is zoned residential. If the effect of such zoning is to render unusable the rear portion of the lot so as to effectively zone it into idleness, hardship exists sufficient to support the grant of a variance, subject, however, to an appropriate finding as to the negative criteria." It goes on to state. AMG Associates versus Township of Springfield, the court held that the owner was entitled to use the rear portion of the lot to provide off-street parking required for office uses. With regards to the master plan, the 2011 master plan land use element first recommended the EDO zones with the purpose of providing more diverse economic activities, which this development will accomplish. It states, "After examining the emergent land use patterns along County Route 527 in the southern portion of Old Bridge and analyzing these areas for development potential, it was found that they are ripe for stronger and more diverse economic development activities and uses." The areas along Route 527 are situated near growing residential and commercial areas. The master plan recommends changing the zone to ED1 for the portion of the lot which fronts on Route 527, approximately 99,892 square feet. And the back portion is 63,373 feet is in the R40. The 2013 master plan reiterates and affirms the 2011 master plan goals and objectives by stating, "The 2011 land use plan element includes recommendation for improving jobs-to-housing ratio, significant changes to non-residential zones, and addressing needs for goods and services, i.e. economic development opportunity zones." This proposed development meets these goals for Old Bridge Township. It is my professional opinion that the proposed mini warehouse, which is a permitted use in the EDO1 zone, and the raising of the existing non-conforming residential dwelling will promote the intent of this zone by improving the jobs-to-housing ratio and providing needed services. It is merely the parking within the R40 zone portion of the lot that creates the need for the use variance relief, but would not be in disharmony with the surrounding area. Other uses are permitted within the R40 zone which require parking lots, such as a daycare or a school, so it is something the township has contemplated. We are also providing an adequate buffer from the parking area to the property lines of the residential uses. This use has limited hours with a close of business at 8:00 p.m. during weekdays and 6:00 p.m. on weekends. Many of the other permitted uses, such as retail and restaurants, would have a greater impact on the adjacent residential properties. Therefore, this use, which is a less intense use, is well-suited to the property. The granting of the use variance request would not be contrary to sound zoning principles or planning." I could get into the bulk variances.
Yeah, just briefly, if you don't mind.
In order to justify the bulk variances requested, bulk relief can be granted based upon C1 and C2 analysis. The C1 analysis deals with hardship related to the property, the physical aspects of the site. The C2 is a weighing test. Do the benefits outweigh the detriments? The ordinance requires a max front yard setback on both Pleasant Valley Road and Route 527 of 50 feet, whereas we are proposing a front yard setback of 60.9 on Pleasant Valley Road and 99.2 on Route 527, in order to provide adequate parking for this use. The max setback requirements work well with retail and personal services, but not as well with light industrial or mini warehouse-type uses. Also, the existing setbacks are 10.2 on Pleasant Valley Road and 357 on Route 527. Neither of these setbacks meet the ordinance, since there is also a minimum of 15-foot requirement. Our proposal is more in conformance with not only the use, but the bulk variance requirements. Also required is a 50-foot residential buffer and a 15-foot right-of-way buffer, whereas we are proposing 45 to 48 feet for a small portion of the parking area within the southern part of the lot for the residential buffer, and 25.5 feet from Lot 9, where the drive aisle is proposed, and a 10.9 feet for the right-of-way buffer. Additional landscaping can be proposed to mitigate the variances. It should also be kept in mind, the landlocked access to the lot, lack of depth, and its L shape presents difficulties in meeting ordinance requirements, which is a hardship. And I could discuss the design waivers?
Yeah, just in terms of the design waivers, I know you heard the testimony of Mr. McDermott regarding the lack of sidewalks in the area, so certainly that would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and could be granted by this board?
Yes.
Okay. And there were a couple other design waivers dealing with bicycle racks and other amenities. This is not a retail site. This is a warehouse, which is gonna be utilized by the business across the street, which is their main building. And again, is there any issue with the board granting the design waivers that are requested?
No, this type of use, we're not proposing any outdoor amenities. The bike racks would not really serve any practical purpose. The employees are gonna be driving to the property. No customers.
All right, and to go, just to jump on the question, I know Mr. Holahan took the EDO1 zoning map up, but I'm glad he had it up there because I don't know if the board saw it. Maybe you can put it back up for a second? Okay, great. So Ms. McGurk, I know you're familiar with the Township of Old Bridge, intimately familiar with it. So you see where the EDO1 zone is, sort of in the middle of that zoning map, correct?
Yes.
All right, and in fact, English Town Road runs
West and south.
directly through the EDO1 zone that's depicted here. Correct?
On 527.
All right. Now, the portion of this property that's in the EDO1 zone is really the bulk of what we're proposing, which is the building and probably 80% of the parking, 75% of the parking, correct?
Correct.
And the only reason we need D1 use variance is relief because we're putting an additional 23 parking spaces in the R40 zone?
Yes.
All right. My question was whether or not there are any other uses in this zone similar to this, or what I believe would be perhaps more intensive, but looking at the aerial.
I didn't ask that question if it's more intensive. I just said, what are the other uses?
I'm sorry. Maybe I misunderstood the question, but I thought you were looking for other uses that are compatible in the EDO1 zone?
Yes.
Okay.
The road service and truck repair, which is directly to the west across Route 527.
Okay, so that's directly across the street. There's a fairly intensive use, more so than the 12,540-square-foot warehouse that we're proposing. Even this evening, Ms. McGurk, I think it was on your agenda, item number three, Interbell Automotive Corp., located at 1706 English Town Road. You're aware that that is a warehouse building that's probably four or five times larger than what's being proposed here?
Yes.
That's that, and that's the exporter of auto salvage vehicles, correct?
Yes.
All right. Obviously, there's not a lot of warehouses in this area, but the warehouses that are in this area are much larger, and the businesses that are located in the EDO1 zone, are they much more intensive than what's being proposed here?
Yes, there's one at 1701 Route 527 that is a warehouse, and there's several other businesses right adjacent to that that are commercial uses.
I don't have any further questions of Ms. McGurk, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Mr. Chairman, I would have about 20 minutes to 30 minutes to ask the planner questions, and I know it's 10:30.
Okay.
Shall I proceed?
I would prefer not.
I can make it shorter.
We're here. We're here now. Why don't you just ask the question? You're not gonna put another witness on tonight. No, in terms of the traffic, I just, I don't, for the, just to save some time here, I know Mr. Taylor's here, but in the traffic comments 40 and 41, there was a question as an explanation of what PSH means. He advised me that means peak street hour, and that was for the traffic study. And in terms of, I guess, templates, we'll certainly provide that during site plan, but we have provided that WB67 can maneuver on this site, as well as a fire truck, so.
Mr. McDermott, put that on the record.
Yeah, we put that on the record, but Mr. Taylor would just state the same thing. So I'm gonna dispense with that. Certainly, if your engineer has, your planner and engineer have questions, we certainly can entertain that.
Sure. Mr. Pluckhorn, I know you.
Mr. Pluckhorn, I know you didn't author this, but...
Yeah, regarding the traffic, I have no questions.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Fox, go ahead.
Thank you. So we're here for the use variance because the proposed accessory parking lot goes into the R40 Zone, right?
Correct.
And the parking lot goes into the R40 Zone because of the way that the site is laid out in the ED1, EDO1 Zone, right?
Yes.
So if the building were moved or relocated, or the site was redesigned, you may or may not need that extra parking to go into the R40 Zone, right?
The lot configuration, the L-shaped lot, and the lack of depth, I don't know that it could be reconfigured to provide the amount of parking the applicant needs.
Well, the applicant is asking for parking for an off-site use as well as the onsite use, right?
Yes.
So that's actually another variance, right?
I'm sorry?
Having parking to off-site use is not a permitted use in the zone.
Well, it's all one lot, though. It's just split.
The testimony was that some of the parking is there because of the use on other properties across the street, right?
No, the lot, the uses are being, are separate uses. There's, the use across the street is not going to be utilizing this for parking.
So, that's not the testimony that I heard. I heard that the extra parking is for other employees for business expansion.
No, I don't think that's the testimony. I think the testimony was is that service vehicles are going to be parked on this location. They're going to use the warehouse to store HVAC equipment, HVAC supplies, and to use it as a training facility.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Thank you.
So I had the pleasure to work with the person that drew up the ED1 Zone. I talked to him about it. And I'll ask you to look at page 3 of 9 in our letter regarding the front yard setback minimum and the maximum front yard setback. Right? So the minimum is 15 and the maximum is 50.
Correct.
Can you imagine why it's that? Why would we want to have zones in our township that are in the ED1 Zone that have this unique maximum front yard setback and a minimum front yard setback, which doesn't happen in other places, in other quarters?
Right.
In a township? Why is that? What's the purpose of zoning in this case?
I do not know. I did speak to the township planner, and I did not, there was no rationale given to me. I would see that as something that would function well with a town center-type development or retail, where you don't want the parking in the front.
Correct. You don't want the parking in the front.
You don't want, you want to encourage walkability.
No, we don't want the parking in the front. You can't put parking in the front effectively with this system here. So if you request, if the applicant's requesting a variance from the maximum front yard setback to be almost double, in the case of Englishtown Road, you don't create this type of neighborhood or node system of development similar to the shopping centers across the street from the municipal building. It has, it meets the minimum front yard setbacks, you can have parking in the rear. That's what I believe the township is trying to achieve in this. But this has parking in the front, and that's why the building is setback. Also, I didn't hear any good reason why any of these buffers are being violated for the right-of-way buffer, or for the minimum arterial buffer, or the single-family use buffer. What's the compelling, what's the benefit to the, Ms. Pal, how would we not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance in that way?
Well, there is a hardship present because of the shape of the lot, the lack of depth, and we would mitigate any negative visual impacts by additional landscaping.
Based upon the location of the building, right? If the, this all presupposes the building has parking in the front.
Again, for this type of use, I don't see any negative impacts for parking in the front. There is no pedestrian walkability in this area. We don't have customers visiting. It's for employees.
Isn't that the case of every business in this neighborhood in the EDO1 Zone?
Well, the existing businesses look like this business, or are much more...
I'm saying, should every business be this way? Should I park in the front?
Well, there's, literally, there's no sidewalks in this area. There's no sidewalks going down Pleasant Valley Road, so I don't see the negative impact for this use. I'm not going to speak on any of the other proposed uses that might be in this area.
And the reason for the, so that's that, but how about the buffers? Why do we have buffer standards, and your testimony was, it's not necessary here?
It's not that they're not necessary, but we will certainly propose additional landscaping to compensate for the lack of buffering. It's an attractive building.
Where's that going to happen, on top of the septic systems?
I'm talking about along the frontage of both roadways.
Yeah, we're talking about on Pleasant Valley Road and Englishtown Road. In fact, I think we've indicated already that when we, if, when we come back for site plan approval, we will obviously be buffering the view on Englishtown Road, which the use across the street happens to be a large trucking operation. And we'll also buffer the view from Pleasant Valley Road, which is owned by Arctic Air, which is going to be utilizing this particular 12,000-square-foot warehouse. Let me ask you another question, Ms. McGurk. You brought up a point about the fact that there's the maximum 50-foot buffer in a, you know, is there a 50-foot buffer on the other side of Pleasant Valley Road where Arctic Air is located between the building and the parking area and Pleasant Valley Road, which by the way is in the same EDO1 Zone? Is that correct?
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's an existing building that was put there before the EDO1.
It is, it is.
So the purpose of zoning and having things is that when changes occur, you comply?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belittle because of the time of the matter here, but we've been promised that if this use variance is granted, that we'll have additional buffer. And I find it difficult to put more plants in there to supplement the having of the buffer on the roads. I would professionally feel uncomfortable in granting a bulk variance without seeing this additional landscaping.
This property is completely surrounded by fences. Yes. And it's not going to go away? No. And there's an existing dwelling there. It's a fairly open area right now. In fact, after, after the development, if this is approved by the board, there'll be more buffering between any residential structures to the east on Pleasant Valley Road.
I'm talking about buffering to the road, between the building and the road.
And obviously, we could propose more mature plantings at a greater height that would increase the buffer.
Mr. Fox?
And again, it's going to be an improvement from what's there.
That's a lot of faith, and I, I'll leave it up to you all.
The building frontage towards Englishtown is 99 feet, right?
Yes.
And you have, you did that for what purpose? Could you have moved the building closer? Would that have served any purpose? If you shifted the building, we're looking north. If you shifted the building west, would it serve any purpose?
Well, again, this is not a commercial business. It's not a retail business. People don't need to see the building. It won't increase walkability or accessibility or pedestrianism.
Well, it was chosen so that it can be circulated. Exactly.
It's for safety and circulation around the building.
That's what I was asking. So moving it to, moving it to the west would serve no purpose?
It would not serve any purpose.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further.
I don't know if Mr. Fox is done.
I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Pluckhorn, anything?
Let me see if the board members have any questions to the witness.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. I'll start on my left.
No, sir.
No, I have none.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're not going to use another witness, right?
No, we're, we'll rest, Mr. Chairman.
I got to go to the public anyway, so why don't I do that now? This is 29-2024Z. Physical location is 19 Pleasant Valley Road, mini warehouse. Anyone here in the courtroom this evening wishes to be heard in this matter, please stand or raise your hand. I can't see anybody over there, but I don't, I don't think you stood or raised a hand. I'll close the public portion. I'm assuming you want to seek a vote, and you want to seek a vote on the use variance and the design waivers?
And the bulk variances.
And the bulk variances.
That's correct.
And there would be, if there was an approval, all of that would be conditional, well, not the use variance, but all the other design waivers and the bulks would be conditional on agreement with the professionals, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and we still have to do a grading plan. We, you know, and that could, that could somewhat change the plan, although I don't think it will. But yeah, we're going to come back to you, and certainly the issue of landscaping, I'm sure, is going to be addressed at greater length by your professionals. Lighting is going to be addressed at that point, but that's acceptable, Mr. Chairman.
And moving the, moving it 90, from 99 feet, 40 foot to the west would serve no purpose?
It's not going to serve any purpose. And, and, you know, again, I might as well sum up at this point, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is a use that's only going to be utilized by the owner of the business across the street, which is Arctic Air. The layout of the building was designed to accommodate its needs. We want to make sure we have enough parking. We want to make sure that we have adequate circulation. And, but for the fact that we have 23 parking spaces in the R40 Zone, which is, you know, on the southern side of the property, we would have been in front of the planning board because it's a permitted use. We'd probably still be seeking bulk variances, but that's the only reason, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, with that said, yes, I would request that the board consider a D1 vote and a vote on the bulk variances and the design waivers.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? It would be D1 if that survives, then we would move on to bulk, the bulks, and then finally the design waivers.
All the design waivers, I know originally, when we started off, it was one.
They're all listed in your report, in the staff report.
So we start on the D. There's a motion.
If everybody feels comfortable on voting on this tonight, then I'm going to ask someone to either move it for approval or move it for denial. Stoner is their second.
Izzo.
Moved in second. I have a roll call, D1.
Ms. Andrews?
We open and close the public. I'm sorry, Mr. Sex. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier?
No, I have to agree with Mr. Fox.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
I'm also agreeing with Mr. Fox, no.
Mr. Stoner?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes.
That's four yeses, two nos.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did not survive. Therefore, it is tonight. Thank you and your professionals for their presentation this evening. We have no further applications. Is there anybody in the audience this evening who have any public comments that they'd like to offer? Please raise your hand now. No one has, I'll close the public portion. Okay. Someone want to move for recess? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, we stand adjourned.